Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 3, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Thorns?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McGaw.
Here.
All present, with the exception of Councilmember Manke, is excused.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. Moving on to meeting agenda approval, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. It is Pollution Prevention Week. You can follow Bothell's social media channels this week to learn simple ways to prevent pollution, then check your knowledge with our Pollution Prevention Quiz. We've got Coffee with a Cop. You can join Bothell Police at Woods Coffee on Thursday, October 5, from 9 to 11 a.m. for coffee and conversation. And another reminder, we've got our Pop Shops on Main Inclusive Incubator Program. You can be part of the city's Pop Shops on Main program. The applications are due online by October 11. There we go. All right. Next up on our agenda is the UW-Bothell Campus Update. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Yeah, tonight, we are joined by the Chancellor of UW-Bothell, Dr. Kristin Esteburg. And just by way of background, I want to remind council that in your council priorities within the economic vitality category, there's a reference to partnering with the campus in order to really focus on strategic economic and cultural opportunities of where we can make. And I think it's a beautiful reflection of the advantage of having a college campus in our community, and we're really thankful for that. And it's, again, it's not just a strategic opportunity, but it's one of those things that makes this community better. So we're very thankful for our partners over on campus. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to the chancellor to be able to talk about some of the things that are going on currently and what's ahead in the year to come with the new academic year. So, welcome.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, city council members, staff, fellow guests. My name is Kristin Esteburg, and I am not only the chancellor of the University of Washington-Bothell, I am also its number-one advocate, which also makes me an advocate for the City of Bothell as well. I really appreciate having a few minutes today to talk about UW-Bothell and our partnership with the city. So since UW-Bothell held its first classes in fall of 1990, we have been proud to be a part of the City of Bothell community, to be a part of this amazing university town and city. Part of our mission of providing greater access to a University of Washington degree includes offering students from across King and Snohomish Counties and beyond an opportunity to earn a UW degree right here in Bothell. We have five schools, for those of you who have not been following us since 1990, Business, Educational Studies, Interdisciplinary Arts and Sciences, Nursing and Health Studies, and STEM. And we offer 17 graduate programs and more than 55 undergraduate degrees. We've come a long way since we first established in Canyon Park. So like the City of Bothell, we are very committed to building our regional workforce. We invest in the local area through community-engaged learning, research, and service projects. And we are working to develop the future community and business leaders that we all need to ensure this city and our surrounding region can thrive. So like the city, our aspiration is to build a beloved community where, as you state so very powerfully, in the 2040 city council vision, everyone experiences a sense of safety, belovedness, and belonging. And our work on inclusion and belonging is a key part of our strategic plan and the work we are ongoing. Now, you might not be surprised to hear that about 90% of our UW-Bothell students come from the state of Washington, or that more than 90% of our more than 30,000 alumni choose to stay right here in Washington to live and work. What you might not know is that 45% of UW-Bothell alumni live within 10 miles of our campus here in Bothell. So many of them live right here in Bothell, but in surrounding communities, Kenmore, Mill Creek, throughout this region. What I am sure you all know is that the City of Bothell is a key resource for our students, our alumni, and also for our 700-plus staff and faculty, as well as our diverse population of students. Now, in some ways, UW-Bothell is a microcity within this larger city, and our development has occurred in parallel, in some ways, to the growth of the City of Bothell over the last 30 years. From housing, transportation, jobs, environmental sustainability, to dining, entertainment, and cultural opportunities, we face some of the same challenges and opportunities. We are working to build strong relationships with employers in our area to meet workforce needs and ensure strong economic development. Recent advancements in this area include our very newest academic center, the Center for Biotechnology, Innovation, and Training, as well as our newest academic building opening this winter quarter, Innovation Hall, which we share with Cascadia College and which is devoted to the STEM disciplines. I hope that many of you will join us on that grand opening in November. We are very, very excited. We foster civic engagement, not just on our campus, but across the city and our region through the work of our faculty, our students, and our staff. And our commitment to the community has been, throughout our establishment, a core value for our campus, for our research, and our teaching. Thanks to a recent donation to the university, we are now funding even more work in this area. So our hope and expectation is that even more faculty and students will be engaged in community-engaged work in the City of Bothell. We strive to balance the needs of our natural environment with our built environment. The overall footprint of our campus, right, our total acreage, is not increasing. I think our neighbors will be very glad to hear that. But we are growing in terms of our infrastructure, our residential components, and our academic buildings. So we have to be extremely thoughtful about developing through density, but in a way that balances growth with our very, very precious green space. Every building, every green space matters, as does how we use and protect our natural resources, from using renewable energy to treating runoff water that comes across campus so that the North Creek remains salmon-safe. If you haven't walked on our campus recently, I invite you to do so, to see how we are really working hard to protect our precious green spaces. And I especially invite you to come on a rainy day so that you can see how water flows through our campus and into the North Creek. I wish I had time to share with you all of the recent awards, national awards, we've received for our efforts in sustainability. But I'm going to just share two. The list is really long. But we are number one in the country for our ground sustainability program, and we are number two in the country for the treatment of water on our campus. And I know how important this is to this city as well. So I couldn't be prouder of our work as an environmentally sustainable campus, and hope you know how deeply committed we are to ensuring that even as we open new buildings, even as we invite students onto our campus, we are doing so in as environmentally conscious a way possible. Now, as anyone who's driven past our campus on Beardsley Boulevard knows, we are in the throes of construction of our residential village, and I thank you for your patience as that construction has gone apiece. We are, as you know, replacing that very old Husky Village Apartments with a new residential village complex. In fact, both Councilmember Dodd and City Manager Standard, both were able to attend our recent ribbon-cutting. I'm really grateful for your presence and grateful to the entire city council's support for this project. The north end of our campus now features the first of three residential halls, as well as our terrace dining pavilion, which operates seven days a week from morning till evening. It is open to the public, and I would invite you to come on campus, share a meal, and check out this new space that we see as a resource for the City of Bothell. Nearly 400 students moved into the first completed residence hall this fall, and when the two additional buildings are completed this time next year, an additional 700 students will move onto campus. That's more than 1,000 students who will call the City of Bothell their home and who will be frequenting local businesses, parks, entertainment, and public transportation throughout their time here. That's a lot of students. We are very, very excited about their participation in the community, and we're so grateful for the welcome that the City of Bothell and Bothell businesses have offered our students. Now, our goal at UW-Bothell is to create an environment where our students, our faculty, and our staff feel connected and engaged. And this means more than just going to class, conducting research, or attending events on campus. It also means our UW-Bothell community members head into the City of Bothell by car, maybe, but also by foot, by bicycle, by public transportation. And they do so to participate in community projects, to do volunteer work, or to engage in recreation and relax. I know community development and economic development is long and sometimes very challenging work, so I am deeply grateful for our longstanding partnership. I also know our future is filled with many, many opportunities to make our shared community better, opportunities that I look forward to embarking on with you together. So we are really proud, as a campus, to have Bothell in our name, and I hope you, too, feel proud to have the University of Washington-Bothell in our community. And I will say, we are not just any university, we are a really great university. And I want you to, just let me brag for one moment. Not only were we ranked number-two best-value college in Washington State by Smart Asset this year, we are also ranked the number-three best university in the country by the New York Times. Rate your own, make your own rankings. If what matters to you is cost, return on investment, campus safety, and the diversity of our student population, number-three in the entire country. That's an extraordinary accomplishment. So thank you so much for having me here this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions I might.
Not everybody all at once.
Stunned.
I think your presentation was just so thorough that there can be no questions.
Well, if I might close with an invitation, please. Our campus is your campus. It's our shared campus, and we really do want all of you, city council members, community members, staff members, to consider our campus your home. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Thorns?
Sorry, sorry. It's my fault. I was lollygagging.
It doesn't have to be somebody's fault. It's okay.
Well, my mind, most of the thoughts that are going through my head are small talk, and I thought, I'm not going to subject everybody to my small talk. But I'm a neighbor of, on the same hill.
Yes.
And I'm a double dog, as is my husband, and we have a couple dogs in the family. One got their degree at UW-Bothell and mentions, still has friendships with some of the professors. In fact, I think the head of the department that he stays connected with and gets support and, and they also get support from him of, when you're out doing this, what is it like, boots on the ground? But there's a lot of things I love about UW. At some point, hopefully, there will be enough, what would my mom call it, discretionary funding, maybe, where there could be community lectures and things, where people could come on campus and just, just be part of the, part of the campus without having to officially apply to be on the campus.
Thank you for that comment, council member. Part of inviting 300 students this year and another 700 next year to live on campus means we are increasing our opportunities for engagement, and that includes public lectures, opportunities to come onto campus. So I think we've seen a great deal more, even in the last couple of weeks, but I think you'll see even more in the year and next year ahead, opportunities to come on campus for exactly that, a lecture, a cultural opportunity. So I do invite you all to partake.
Well, that is, you know, fun to hear, and thank you for all the great factoids. I was busy taking notes. So it was, it was great to hear all the good things that are going on.
Thank you.
And Dr. Esteburg, thank you for coming and giving us an update tonight. We're very glad that you're here, as in a sense of you're here in this room with us right now.
I'm thrilled to be present with you in this.
But also in the fact that you're here in the sense that the university is here in Bothell. We think it's a really big asset, and we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next up is our city manager report. City manager?
Thank you very much again, Mayor. And I'll note, too, that it is the season, it's, as the school season does kick off, that there's a good time for reports. We will later this month hear from the president of Cascadia College, Dr. Eric Murray, as well, from some of their perspectives. So look forward, look forward to that. I have a city manager report item today that I just wanted to put some context around an article that was in the Seattle Times yesterday, and I even did a PowerPoint because it involves numbers, and if I just say them, that's very different. There was an article on the front page of the Times yesterday, and it was titled "Thousands of New Homes Needed Across King County." So I suspect that that will get a lot of attention. And new, too, that that might also bring some new audience into conversations that we're having about growth and comp planning, and what are the things that the city is responsible for. So wanted to tee that up a little bit tonight, share a little, a little more details than what appeared in the article. There was just a couple of lines. But then also, share opportunities to be involved, and what will be coming back to council over the next few weeks, as well as an open house opportunity. So the article had a focus on growth targets and housing needs within our region, based on a range of affordability. And it was focused entirely on King County. And again, one of the things that makes Bothell unique is that we are in two. There's a couple items I wanted to clarify, as I mentioned, that Bothell is facing in terms of, in the additional housing demand. So by way of background, again, I know council will remember this, but for anyone who's following that's new, King County's Growth Management Planning Council, or the GMPC for short, recently adopted an ordinance amending county-wide planning policies to adopt the growth targets and allocation based on affordable housing needs and ranges. And that was a big driver of the story that was in the Times yesterday. For the King County portion of our community, the total number of housing units that was cited in the article and is needed by 2044 is 5,800. And again, that's, I think, one of those numbers that will get people's attention and start wondering, well, what's, how is that going to happen? The wording in the article, though, also read, could have been read a few different ways, and so one of the things that, as staff, as we looked at it, wanted to clarify is that there was a statement in there of 160 units were needed for the lowest income band. And that income band that's being referred to is 0% to 30% of AMI income range within King County. The thing about that quote was, is that you could look at it a couple ways, but it's important to note, that's per year. So that wasn't a total over into 2044. That was per year over the next 20 years. So for reference, we have a entirely affordable project going on just on the other side of, by the Park of Bothell Landing, and that's the Sama Senior Apartments Project. That is a roughly $34 million project that's going to develop 76 units. So when we talk about the number of affordable units, that's, it's, this is a, this is a significant lift. So when you do the math of 20 times that, then you get into, by 2044, the requirement that Bothell is being asked to produce in King County is 3,205. So this is where I'm going to, I'll put a slide up. I'll just note, note first, too, that first column is total number of units, total, and then it goes into income bands, but you don't add across from left to right. It'll never work. So being in two, a city in two counties, then, we also have planning requirements within Snohomish County. There's a slightly different methodology, but it's similar. The total number of housing needs there for extremely low, very low, and low-income range, so that's 0% to 80%, for Snohomish County alone is 4,872, or about 70% of the total number of units that we're expected to develop of 6,982. So when you look at both counties, for our community, and that is what we're looking at, is for Bothell, is 12,782. And then, again, on this chart, you can see what the breakdown is in terms of the lowest income band of 0% to 30% of AMI, and then when you combine everything for 80%. So again, there was a number in the paper, gets people's attention, but just wanted to put the full context, too, of we're still, we are looking at two counties. That's a lot of details for a city manager report, and so what I also wanted to do is put a focus on if people are saying, okay, now you have my attention, I need to know more about this. There's a few opportunities. So next week, our Community Development Director, Jason Greenspan, is going to be with us doing a staff report, providing a middle housing update. It's been a few months since we've had a conversation at council, and so we'll, we've been, been working on that as staff, and Jason will present what to expect. And then also, part of the middle housing, again, middle housing is providing housing units, but not necessarily affordable housing units. Those are two different things. So we'll also be talking about growth targets and HB 1220. The staff will also be getting into more details of the House Bill and growth targets at the, the October 17 meeting. That is going to be comp plans focused, a study session, and focusing specifically on land use, economic development, and housing, and a review of the growth targets and how that all works. So if people do have questions, you'll get a lot better information than you get from your city manager when we have our, our planning staff here. So that'll be in two weeks. And then finally, the other thing that I wanted to help promote is that we do have also a public open house coming up, where there's going to be staff helping answer questions about all the different comprehensive plan amendment elements. It's going to be on a, an evening, Thursday evening, I believe, October 26, from 5:00 to 8:00, at Skyview Middle School. So we'll be getting out of City Hall and into a different part of the community and able to, to share. The promotion, again, starts with free ice cream, because that's like the best news of this update. One of the, one of the things that I'd just point out, then, is there's more information on the website. If people want to, want to get involved, we'll be promoting that more deeply. There's a number of community events going on this month, but you'll be seeing that on the community engagement slide at the beginning of the meeting the next two weeks, and just wanted to highlight that today. If you go out to our website and you're not sure where to go, if you go to the search bar in the top-right screen, if you do a search for a day or for a lifetime, this will be the first item that comes up in the search results. So I'd encourage people to take a look, add it to your calendars, and we hope to see a number of people in the community there, and explain this in a lot more conversational, conversational way than a council meeting can sometimes offer. So a lot more conversation to come, but again, with, with that being in the, in the news, we just wanted to put some context around it. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I say, aside from the ice cream, it makes me really happy to see that we've got it translated in multiple languages and that we're providing childcare. So thank you for that.
I will also, like, again, I can't do it justice, and I'm going to steal, like, thunder from people, but really, really thankful to our, our team for looking for childcare that's also educational. So they've been partnering with the Imagine Children's Museum in Everett to also have some interactive topics and activities that really do relate to city planning, and I think that'll be a, a good way of being able to, if anybody needs to bring their kids with them and wants to make it interesting and walk away having a similar experience, it's a good way to do it. So I'm thankful for the creativity.
Awesome. All right. Next up, we have visitor comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. I have nobody signed up this evening. However, if anyone's in the audience that wishes to speak, Mr. Swanson, please step to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
I need a couple extra minutes to add to the three that's traditional. But I'd like to ask the council for that additional.
No, Mr. Swanson, if this is what you want to use your public comment time doing, you're welcome to, but I'd ask that we start the timer if we're going to start having conversations. Everybody gets three minutes, Mr. Swanson.
I'm sorry if I don't recognize your phone. When you listen to the code says, I get to ask the council. I'm unclear that you have the authority to make this decision.
Mr. Swanson, you can go, you do public comment for three minutes, if you would like. If you would not like, you're welcome to not, but that is where you go for public comment, and we will move on from public comment.
...the finding out of the city that you have on this issue. Or I'll do that.
All right. If, Mr. Swanson, if you're not going to give public comment tonight, we are going to move on.
I'd like to remind, my name is Mark Swanson. I lived on, in Bothell for 32 years. It's going to be 33 come January. Now, I was here before the University of Washington-Bothell was even here. And what we were told then, there's going to be no student residences. It was going to be a commute-only college. And I lived in Beardsley Cove Apartments, which is now part of the University of Washington campus housing, which was a broken promise to the people of Bothell, no residential housing at all. But, you know, that's turgid water under the bridge. But it's not an unknown device of city councils, to use weasel words, to get what they want. It took me a long time to figure out what the heck was going on in this city, and I've got a few, few things left yet to go. But a lot of things are very clear to me now. I mentioned BOPAP. I won't go through it much, but I, I will say that Kerry Westercheck, Freudian's lip, Kerry Westerbeck has a social presence where he said he doesn't see a problem at all building up to six stories with no setbacks in any neighborhood in Bothell. Now, that's pretty embarrassing, in my opinion. A little housekeeping. Mason, Mayor Thompson, you mentioned that, hey, if we just upgrade the buffer zones, then we can reduce the setbacks, right? Well, the problem with that is, we don't know the science behind that because of the tire dust, salmon poison issue. Department of Ecology has no idea how to take care of that. There is no remediation that you can show to upgrade buffer zones. Follow the science. Bringing buses into Bothell increases our CO2 footprint. Bringing buses into Bothell increases 200 times the salmon poison going into our 1.6 miles of river here. Follow the comprehensive plan and the law.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? If so, please go to the podium. That's all I have. And can I just ask you to go back to city council reports?
There's two things that I, I'm going to go back to. I just want the community to know, on the agenda, there's an update from the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. That item has been postponed to a later date, and now we will go to council committee Councilmember Aldrich?
I have a few today. A couple, well, let me go, let me start in the past and go closer to the present. On September 25, I received an email from AWC saying that the Legislative Priorities Committee's recommendations were approved by the AWC Board, and those will be published in the short, in a short order ahead of the 2024 legislative session. Next up, on September 29, I attended the Human Services Forum that was hosted by NUSA and King County Councilmember Rod Dambowski. That forum brought together human services agencies from across North King County, and together with King County staff, we were able to talk about the different ways that grants could be we were able to talk about the different ways that grants could be more accessible to organizations, and they could be more likely to achieve funding for programs and opportunities up here for the North King County cities. Our human services coordinator, Anand, presented to the gathering about the state of human service needs in Bothell. And that presentation is available, and I think will, has it been emailed out to all council members? It probably can be. Last up, on October 2nd, myself, Councilmember Zornz, and Deputy Mayor Al Cabra attended the Human Services Committee meeting. And we were able to receive an update about the emergency weather shelter that is being funded by the Regional Homelessness Authority. And cities in North King County have been asked to donate some funds to that, to help them implement that shelter. We do have some funds that have been saved in reserve to assist in that project. And so that is a choice that, that council can make to use those reserved funds to help fund that shelter. There's also a number of community engagement events coming up that are, that's being hosted by, or that the city of Bothell is partnering with other, other organizations. One is a Community Resource Fair and a forum for nonprofit partners that will, still has a to be determined date as far as I know. And then November 18th is going to be a fun day at the library because in the morning, there's Civic Saturday, and in the afternoon, there is a Diwali event that's being done in partnership with KCLS. One of the big successes of having hired Anand as our human services coordinator is that he's been able to visit with over 30 human services agencies since being hired. And yeah, that's, those are the notes that I took from that meeting. And if other council members who were in attendance want to add to that, happy to get updates from them as well. Thank you.
All right, last call. Anybody else? All right. Moving on to the projected agenda discussion. Also seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Aldrichs to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no. Want to call your name? Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
That's the six zero. With Councilmember McNeil.
All right. Next up is a study session. So we're going to go right down there for the right-of-way plan and ordinance for condemnation for right-of-way and temporary construction easements for the 35th Avenue Southeast Drainage Improvements Project. And I think rather than take a break right now, let's just head straight down there and, and do it. All right, city manager?
All right. We do have three study session items tonight. It's very public works oriented. So thankful that our deputy director, Steve Marcah, is here with us for all three of them. So get comfortable, Steve. One thing that I didn't note at the top of the meeting that is more relevant, starting with this topic, is that this was the first meeting that we've implemented a change that council had discussed recently. And then just kind of an overview of some of the changes that we're working on, including for public engagement, where all the PowerPoint presentations are being made available online Monday evening. So for those who do have, are online or watching along, if you go to the agenda itself, up in the, the top of the agenda during some of the preamble items that talk about how the meetings work, there is a link that the city clerk staff are posting PowerPoints. I noticed, at least from my experience, you needed to download them to be able to see them. So we're sometimes used to just clicking on things and seeing them. But if you download, they're available. So I hope that's helpful for the community and also for council members as you're preparing for your meetings. And we'll, we'll be looking for feedback continuously on that. So if there's anything people would like to see or ask questions on, please let us know. All right. With that, I'm going to go to the first study session item, which is regarding right-of-way plan for ordinance for consideration of, and temporary construction easement for 35th Avenue Southeast Drainage Improvement Project. This will be somewhat familiar to you from our CFP, our capital facilities plan and budget. And we're moving forward and have some, some actions to do. I will emphasize, there's no action being sought tonight. As you're getting used to with study sessions, we will be coming back with later, at a later date to answer any remaining questions that aren't answered tonight and to seek, seek direction. But for now, this is an overview. I mentioned that Steve is with us tonight, but I'm going to turn things over first to capital projects engineer, Scott Adamac, to walk us through the presentation.
I'd like to give you a, this evening, I'd like to provide an introduction to the 35th Avenue Drainage Improvements Project and the associated right-of-way plan with temporary construction easements and ordinance to allow for condemnation as necessary. And again, no formal action is requested at this time. This slide shows the three main activities of the project, design, right-of-way, acquisition, and construction. The schedule is mostly driven by the Corps of Engineers permit that expires in March 2026. I'd like to orient you to the project location here. This is 35th Avenue Southeast, I-405, and of course, the North Creek Business Park. So the project location is in the red circle, and it's basically where the Coal Woods Creek crosses 35th. And then, and for orientation here, this is where the North Creek stretch is, where this is where Coal Woods Creek enters North Creek right about here downstream of the project location. The existing culvert under 35th, excuse me, under 35th there is undersized, and it's resulted in periodic flooding, both on the nearby roadway surface of 35th Avenue Southeast and the properties located to the south. This existing culvert will be replaced by a much larger culvert. Because this creek is fish, has fish potential, the new creek, the new culvert will need to be fish passable. So the photo on the lower right here shows the culvert right there. The water is flowing away from the screen and then toward the middle into the culvert. This is 35th Avenue Southeast right here. And you can see that the culvert is pretty undersized. We're looking basically in the southwest direction. Over in the lower left here is a typical view of the creek downstream or west of the culvert. And it's, we're looking to the east, maybe northeast there. So that gives you an orientation of the project. This is the project timeline. Key events that are shown on the slide, from 2007 to the present, there's been periodic flooding, as I mentioned, of both the roadway, but also properties to the south, to include the 35th and 240th intersection. And under really extreme events, the Montevilla Business Park farther to the south. In 2018, we started project design and permitting and interaction with the property owners. And the project was updated as part of the later 2019, 2025 Comprehensive Facilities Plan. Currently, we're at the 60% design with permits completed, and the plan is to go to bid in next year, in 2024, and construct in 2024 and 2025. This slide shows a lot of information, and I'll take a couple of minutes to explain the features that are depicted in this slide. This main north-south or upwards-downwards feature is 35th. North is toward the top of the slide. The red arrow points to where the, the new culvert will be. And the old culvert is this line here that's kind of more diagonal, about 60 feet south of the new culvert. So the new culvert will be a box culvert, approximately 55.5 feet high and 12 feet wide. The two black arrows, sorry, trying to point out with my cursor here. Okay, the two black arrows are pointing to these two boxes here on the left and on the right of where the culvert is. And this is really the topic of our presentation this afternoon, or this evening. These are the right-of-way acquisitions that we are asking for. The rectangle or right-of-way to the east or to the right of the culvert is for the future inlet to the new culvert. And the box or right-of-way to the left or west of the culvert is for the outlet of the new culvert. The white arrows are pointing to the temporary construction easements. And that is where, as you can see on this, the slide here, where part of the stream is going to be realigned to basically flow into the new culvert, and then downstream to the west of the culvert, and it'll be a realignment. So it's, it's realignment and also, also fish habitat and stream improvement as part of this project. So the old part of the, or the, the current part of the creek travels this way and goes basically along this line here. And the realignment of the creek will be basically following this path right here. So the, the permanent right-of-way acquisitions are these, just two, these two boxes to the east and west of the culvert. But these temporary construction easements are only needed for construction. Once construction is complete, these temporary construction easements will no longer be needed. This slide summarizes the path forward for right-of-way acquisition and condemnation. Again, city staff has been in contact with the affected property owners since 2018. The right-of-way plan approval is necessary to start the right-of-way phase. For condemnation, this allows the city to proceed with the project on time. The goal is to find common resolution through negotiation. The city is required by the Washington State Constitution to pay fair value for the owners. The city will continue to negotiate with the affected property owners in good faith. Negotiation is the primary path. Again, no action is requested at this time. On October 17th, council will be asked to approve both the right-of-way plan and the condemnation ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz?
I can leap in. Juan, this is a fascinating presentation. I can't even imagine all the pieces that you have to, you know, get in alignment. Get your chickens, Juan, as my mom would say. But fascinating to look at and study. On the TCE, is there a rehab of that area afterwards? I mean, what do you do? I imagine, you know, there's an impact on that area.
Yes, ma'am.
So is there a rehab that happens of that area?
Yes, there'll be, there'll be a habitat and also vegetation restoration. There'll be, you know, at the 60%, I'm not sure exactly what we're going to get for that, but certainly at the later design phases, we're going to have a, there's going to be a planting plan, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
And there'll be a lot of vegetation to restore the natural vegetation, probably native species and all that.
Great.
And then also, you know, after construction's complete, the project, it doesn't, you know, isn't finished. There's actually a, a pretty long operations and maintenance monitoring period where consultants will go out and periodically monitor the vegetation and make sure that the plantings are, are alive and doing what, you know, hopefully growing and all that. For these kinds of projects, it's kind of typical that there'll be a little bit of die-off and maybe some replanning. But, you know, it's, it's part of the project lifecycle of this kind of a restoration project.
So I understand that you're moving the stream away from the home. Will it, will there, will it be a wetland in that area that you will have been doing that work in there where you're going to?
Well, there's, it's, I, I think it's, part of it may be classified as a wetland, and that's part of, that was included. There was, there was many agencies that were involved with the permitting. And so the, the path that was chosen by the consultant, the engineering, the design engineer was felt as the more historical channel and probably the, the one that would be the most robust, you know, during a peak storm events. Because that's one danger is that, you know, you design and then you build, construct something, and then you have a really high intensive event, and some of it gets washed away or altered. So what the consultants came up with is something that's going to be robust. And they did the hydrodynamic modeling, you know, not only stream flow, but sediment transport and all that.
I would love to see before and maybe in the middle and after, just to appreciate everything that goes into putting that together. If I can be Snoopy and, you know, come and look at that, it would be fascinating to see that happen. So I have two other questions. Will the culvert mitigate flooding? I saw that you referenced that there's flooding in Montevilla. Will it mitigate some of the flooding that happens there?
Well, it will, it will mitigate the, the source that's coming from here.
Okay.
So my understanding is that there's multiple sources at both the 240th and 35th intersection as well as Montevilla. And so I really can't comment on, on those mitigation measures at this point. But I know that our stormwater team is actively looking at.
It'll soften the impact.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the expectation. And then, did I hear you really correctly that it's a 55-foot tall?
No, I'm sorry. It's, it's a five and a half foot.
Oh, okay.
Tall.
Okay.
Box culvert. I'm sorry.
I didn't hear you.
I said 5.5, I think, and I should have said five and a half, so.
No, 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 it's, it's my ears. It's not you.
I, I heard the same thing. I was like, wow, they're going deep.
I know. I'm saying the thing. So 55.
Just five and a half feet.
Okay. All right. Great. That's all I have. Thank you so much. This was really fascinating.
Oh, I can just go?
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. As I was reading through the packet earlier, or last week when it came out, and, and hearing your presentation. So 2018, we started talking to the owners.
That's my understanding, sir, yes.
But this is now five years later, and we're still talking about condemnation and like a possible forceful, like why, why did the negotiations not happen the past five years? And like, why are we at this point right now?
My understanding is that the funding has been a big, I wouldn't call it an obstacle, but it's been a challenge. And so there's, there's been, the, the project has kind of gone, started and stopped based on funding. And, but I think we've, my understanding is we've been engaged with the, the owners, you know, throughout that time. Steve, if you want to.
Let me add to that. So there's a definite process that we go through. Typically, when we start a project like this and we start design, we can talk to the property owners about the project. We can probably talk to them about impacts and show them things like this. But we cannot talk to them about cost and acquiring their property until the council approves the right-of-way plan. Then we can actually start meeting with them and say, okay, you know, you know about the project. You know that You know that we're going to need to talk to you about acquiring land. Now we can talk to you and make you an offer and go through that whole process that we need to go through. So the two owners on each side have been talked to for various reasons. It's actually been before this project because flooding has occurred quite a bit. So previously, on the upstream side, there was a dam that lasted for quite a while, was concerning to us, and one day it failed. So there had been a lot of discussions with that property owner because they're concerned about how the stream is going to act in the future and everything. And of course, the downstream property owner is even more concerned. If you open it up, what's going to happen? So a lot of the design process is working back and forth and addressing some of those concerns. Putting a stream into a new location is a lot of work. And if you have to avoid existing structures and things, that's something else you have to work through as well. So there's been a design process, I think, that's probably taken longer than we've hoped. But we're finally ready to tie it down and then go talk to them about what we actually need to do the work that we've been talking about.
And it's a compressed timeline. I mean, we have to start work in the spring, correct?
So the thing is, when you start something like this, you feel like you have a lot of time, so you go back and forth. Once you apply for the permits, you get permits for a certain period of time. If you don't get the work done, then you have to ask for an extension. And after an extension, I don't know how many extensions we could get on HBA, but at some point, you might have to reapply and start over again. So we are kind of on a clock now that we have gotten a permit, so to speak.
And doesn't it put the property owners at a disadvantage, given that we have to work through those deadlines, within those deadlines? But then the property owners, like, I don't know.
So yes and no. So I think the good part here is they've known about this for a while, so hopefully it's, they've been able to think about it for a while. Yes, there's a timeline, but the condemnation process is not necessarily on a timeline that's associated with the project. What is typically associated with the project is what they call possession and use. So what happens is the processes we go through and we identify projects that we feel is needed for the city. That's in our comprehensive plan and everything. Those projects, we need to essentially go to court and convince the court that it is in the city's interest to do this project. And if it is, and let's say the landowner doesn't agree with us, if they can't convince the court that it is in the city's best interest to move forward with this project, then what happens is the court grants typically, if we haven't agreed on a price, possession and use. So we agree on the impacts. We agree on the need of the take for permanent need. And possession and use is granted. Scott goes and builds the project. While we're building the project, we're still going through that process of negotiation and if necessarily going through the court process to determine what fair compensation is. So it's not necessarily limited to, it has to happen before construction starts. It can go beyond construction and even completion of construction if that's how long it takes to get to an agreement.
I mean, this is similar to the last year, the project, the Roundabout project on Meridian. We had the similar conversation, and I brought up similar points. The more opportunities we can provide, you know, the landowners, you know, like the idea of taking somebody's land without their permission is like, to me is.
So it's the same, the way they've scheduled it. It's now that they got the permit, I believe you have about six months or so to go talk to them, continue. At some point, we have to draw a line in the sand because court proceedings take a while, so.
I get it. I understand the constraints we are working towards. But, you know, that's why when we talk about 2018, we start conversations. I understand that there are other issues, like we don't know what we don't know and all these things, and then the pandemic hit. So I understand, but I, you know, I'm sure there's going to be more projects like this in the future. I think the better, the more we can pre-plan, the better.
One of the, one of the factors, though, too, on that timeline is not knowing what needs to be acquired. So it's not as though, like in 2018, what may have been, and then the design, things have changed too. So I think one of the things that we do keep the focus on is making sure there's a relationship. And again, it's not a surprise. I think those are some of the factors that go into it that really mitigate having it be something that we're, again, when we come and seeking the authority of this, it doesn't mean that the intent is to use the authority. The intent is to be able to bargain in good faith, as Scott mentioned, and to wrap it up, and we're hopeful that the years of conversation. And in this case, I think with this project, you know, sometimes in, you know, Roundabout, there's a subjectivity of, is that what is needed? Something like this, where we have property owners who have had their land affected by flooding. I think there's a different engagement as well. So we'll keep, we'll keep, we'll introduce into this conversation and again, try and make it as much of a relational partnership as we can.
And that's just for the black arrows. But the white arrows, I think easements should be easier process? Or is it similar process we have to follow?
So I guess for right-of-way, there's two things, and they sound very similar. So one is a temporary construction easement. So this is something we purchase. So we determine how long we need it, what effect impacts there are, and appraisal is done and a cost is associated with it. So that's something that the city pays for. A temporary construction permit is something that the city typically does not pay for. The example of that would be we're widening a road. We already have the right-of-way, but your driveway is right there. We can say, well, your driveway is going to look like this if we don't allow us to get on your property and regrade some of your driveway and make it nice and smooth. We don't have to do it for our project. You can still get in and out, but we think it would be a better fit if you allow us to get on your property. We're not going to pay you for it. That's a permit. This is an easement. We have to get on the property to do the work because we have to do.
The whole thing, if we do the court thing, it's going to have to be for the whole white and black.
It would be.
The whole, the whole shaded, yeah, the pinstripe area.
I think they would go together. We would work with each property owner on the permanent part that would become part of the roadway and part of the culvert, and we would work with them on the easement, all in one fell discussion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
To follow up on what the deputy mayor is asking, I'm also wondering, were the property owners notified about this study session? It feels kind of weird to be having a conversation about these properties without the people who are affected being here. Not like, you know, I'm sure that they might have something that they want to say to council, but like, if, I just would like to know that they were notified about the study session, that they know that we're talking about it tonight, and that they had the opportunity to be here if they wanted to be here.
Yeah, they were, notifications were sent out like a couple of weeks ago. And actually, the project team, the primaries, including myself, we visited with the owner on the east side of the culvert. And after a few email exchanges, and the person on the west side was on vacation. And actually, this afternoon, we had a Zoom call with them. So they were both aware of this evening's meeting and the topics of what we're going to discuss, so.
Thank you. I'm really glad to hear that you had that call with them ahead of this meeting and that, and they knew that they had the opportunity to come and give public comment if they wanted to, and that they know how to get ahold of everybody involved in the project, council. Like, just, I'm sure that you've already handled that part of it. And I'm just glad that.
It was actually my supervisor who handled it.
Okay.
But, but yes.
You can get credit while you're here.
Well, and I would say, you know, this is just the start. I mean, you know, nothing has really broken ground yet. And I think I can speak for the Capitol group that excellence and teamwork is a couple of the high core values. So this is just the beginning of the relationship. And as the project advances in design, and then we actually get into construction, you know, the intent is to have good teamwork between the city and the contractor or contractors as well as the owners. And that way, that everybody is going to be happy with the project at the end.
Great, thank you. I admire those values, and I'm glad that you are centering those in your work. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm very happy to hear that you're working with all of the parties who are involved, including the contractors, so that it's a nice peaceful project.
Future to be determined.
Yes, so that's an important key element. So thank you for being proactive with that, including the owners. The funding sources for this come from where?
Steve, I'm going to have to, I think it's loans, basically.
Yeah, primarily, it's the storm utility. We do have a Public Work Trust Fund loan, which will provide us the ability to do the project and then pay for it over a period of time at very low interest rates. Currently, that's what we have allocated. In the future, we continue to look at grants for all projects, just in case there's opportunity. We're even talking about this one for a federal project. The problem with this one is currently, we haven't used any federal funds. And if you make it a federal project, there are different requirements and more strings attached that actually cost money. So we have to get a certain amount of federal funds to make it worthwhile. So that discussion is happening. But at this time, I think it's storm utility funds and Public Work Trust Fund loan. And I'm going to look at right, just to make sure. Public Work Trust Fund loan, storm utility.
Correct. So ultimately, we're, unless we get some grants, we'll be paying for it.
Over a period of time.
Over a period of time.
Yes.
Right, so it's part of that utility that we have to, service that we provide to the city.
Yes.
If I'm understanding that correctly. And if memory serves, we've done other rechanalization, other projects like this one, correct?
The biggest one we did was Horse Creek. Yes, so we have done this before. This is a little different. A lot of the work is on the private property. We have to be very cognizant about that. And I think they realize that as well because they have a stream on their property, and there are requirements with streams. So it has to be kind of this working relationship.
And on the past Horse Creek projects, we've learned from the successes of that project. Am I correct in assuming that we've learned some things?
There are things that we didn't anticipate. That project grew in cost more than we thought. Trying to recreate a natural environment is difficult. So hopefully, we learned some things, and hopefully, we're a little more conservative, I think, on some things like cost and how long it's going to take.
Was that project funded by any type of grants? The Horse Creek project at all, do you remember?
Horse Creek project actually also had a Public Work Trust Fund loan. One of the things we did for that one, which is very different, is we created a district that essentially allowed properties within the drainage basin to buy into the system. And the benefit for them was they didn't have to detain water on-site. So if you can imagine, you have a two-acre parcel, and you have to catch all your rainwater and detain it, it costs a lot of money. So rather than pay the money into their system and they have to forever maintain it, they essentially paid a fee that went toward paying for part of Horse Creek. So it was kind of like a regional.
Is there that opportunity here now?
Probably not. This is a very focused thing. My assumption is, once this project is done, we're pretty much done with this stream. There is another crossing, 39th to the east. That also is on private property. It's a little smaller at that point there. There's a ton of wetlands there that when the water doesn't collect there, it kind of goes through that wetland and spreads out. This one, unfortunately, is a pinch point that doesn't have that many wetlands on each side of it, and it can't absorb all that water.
Okay, so it sounds like maybe there's one more that we have to.
I don't think we're going to look at that one.
Okay.
I think this is probably it for this particular branch of the stream.
So the reason I ask that question is, we're looking at all these spot projects, and not just here in Bothell, but throughout the region, right? Throughout the ecosystem with the streams and the rivers, the tributaries, right? And so what's interesting to me is, hopefully, at some point in the future, we look at the whole system holistically and understand what we need to do, where we need to do it, and what effects it's going to have downstream as well. Because we do see right now the sediment issues that we're having at the mouth right now, where it's literally one foot deep. And so hopefully, as we go through these projects and we talk to cities and municipalities into the future, we can talk about these things that we're doing here in Bothell, what Kenmore, Woodinville, and others are doing around to help this entire system versus just spot. So I know we're doing a great job, but hopefully, we start to have those conversations. And I know you probably are, but hopefully, they start to come into inclusiveness with the entire system, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a quick, I have a quick comment that is probably better suited for here than in council conversations. I just did a road trip with my mother back to Sheridan, Wyoming. And I appreciate your comment about looking at a bigger, broader picture because we crossed the Continental Divide, crossed it. And in my day, I learned on the Continental Divide, water on one side went east, the other side went west. We were across the Continental Divide in Livingston, Montana, and they're part of the headwaters for the Columbia River watershed basin. And my mind was just blown at how much water through the Pacific Northwest actually feeds into one river. And it's not a small thing. So I appreciate your comment about looking at things big picture. This is an important piece of a big picture. But water is something, you know, we take for granted in the Pacific Northwest, and it's important stuff.
No, I really appreciate that. And I, on some of the, a lot of my committee assignments are transportation and climate-related. And there are similar committees that staff go to to do the real work besides policy setting, right? Because they actually have to make things happen where we just say, that sounds nice. So I'm wondering, do those exist for our stormwater and for our streams? Like, they, you do talk to other municipalities and do that long-term planning across. It's not just like have a happenstance conversation. It's, there's intentional work there too, right?
You're stretching my ability. I believe Storm does. There are WIRA, W-I-R-I-A, so they do regional things, just like transportation, and they try to look things, at things regionally. So yes, I think they do that. It may not get down to this kind of level, you know, all the stream, small, small streams, they kind of look at larger sections. But I do, I do believe they chart a plan as a whole, and I believe they do share information.
Okay, I thought so. I just, I didn't, I've never asked that before, so I thought I would make sure.
All right, I think we're out of questions. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, before we move on to our second study session, we are going to break for 13 minutes. It is 7:07, we'll be back at 7:20. All right, welcome back. Second study session of the night is Agenda Bill 23147. It's a study session for two items associated with Sound Transit in the ST3 Stride Bus Rapid Transit Project, Parking Removal and Northeast 85th Street Funding Agreement. City Manager?
Thank you again there. And, you know, this is a second topic that if you look at the history section of your agenda bill, you'll see it goes back to 2018. So some of, some of these things are familiar, and there's been open houses, Sound Transit's conducted, and maps and graphics and everything. But the project's starting, starting to get real. So some of the decisions around supporting the project are coming up for council, and tonight is no exception. So we'll have a study session on this. Again, we're still joined by our Deputy Director, Steve Marikawa. And then I wanted to note, too, that our presentation tonight is from our Capitol Division Manager, Jason Torrey. Jason will be familiar to many of you and has been working on projects such as Sound Transit for a number of years. But this is his first time appearing before council since promotion to have the title Capitol Division Manager. So we were talking just during the break about, one of the things that I used to say in my career was, is that I was going to just go up to the level of where I didn't have evening meetings in my career, and look where that got me. So Jason is on a path that can lead to some really interesting time choices. But we're glad he's here, and he'll be walking us through the presentation and answering any questions that you might have.
Thank you, City Manager, for that kind words. Yeah, I knew what I was getting into following Steve's footsteps here, so. Mayor Thompson, members of council, I'm here to present a couple of Sound Transit items. And the first of which is, once again, we're not having, requesting any council action tonight. This is informational. We plan on coming back November 14th with the action items for both of these, hopefully. So, and the two items are a resolution for parking removal of on. of removal of on-street parking, and authorize city manager to execute a funding agreement for the Northeast 185th roadway project. So you guys, we all heard about Stride and Sound Transit's project to bring bus rapid transit to the city. Here's a little timeline of what they've been working on and how it's been going. They've started final design and right-of-way acquisition first quarter of this year. They'd started design as early as, I think, '21 or '22 on this project. In quarter one of '24, they're working on permitting. They've got construction identified to start in second quarter of '25 with service starting, oh, whoops, we'll go back up. Trying to get this out of the way. There we go. Service starting in 2028 of quarter two, so. The stride route in Bothell is going to come down SR 522 as it's coming from Kenmore, hang a left and go up 98th where there'll be a library station. And then as 98th turns and transitions into Northeast 185th, continues east on 185th down to a station of pairs, pair of stations at 104th and 185th, and then transitions over to Beardsley Boulevard for pair of stations at Uda Bothel Cascade Campus, and then up to 405 where there's the last station in Bothell. So to facilitate these improvements for both stations and safe transport of the buses, they have a number of on-street parking that needs to be removed. And the reasons for it are varied. There are a total of 57, I think. I think the next slide will show you the total. But so new station locations, we're taking, they need seven spots. Improved transit operation and safety is 13 spots. And reduction to property impacts, five. And roadway widening to current standards, which also can be classified as safety to some degree, as well as 34 spaces. So here's a picture of where all the parking spaces are being removed. And it's a total of 59. I know that's kind of hard to read up there, and I think I can zoom in if we need to. Right here. So. Yeah, okay, great. So you can transcribe for the rest of us. So you can see, we got a few spots here on the widening where 98th turns around to 185th. We're losing some of those spots there to accommodate for a wider bus lane as the bus, you know, makes the turn. And as we continue east on 185th, we've got a couple of spots here near 102nd. And here at 104th is where we have our second set of station pairs. And then we have some widening and some improvements here at Beardsley and 185th where our signal's going to go in. You know, parking, on-street parking and a signalized intersection don't really work too well together. And then we continue on. Here's the station at Uda Bothel project along here. So those are all the 59 stations that are being removed. I'll also state that 185th is not only a transit corridor, but it's also a primary emergency route for both fire and police. The emergency route, transit corridor, don't really mesh well with on-street parking for safety reasons and reliability reasons. So that's another reason. We're sort of slowly phasing out parking along this corridor as development occurs, and this being sort of the biggest one. There is a WAC that requires the city to have a resolution when more than 100 feet of parking is removed. So that's another reason why we're here tonight for that resolution. The second item I'm speaking to is a $5 million contribution from Sound Transit for the rebuilding of 185th. So we actually are out to add today for a construction project to rebuild and Northeast 185th from Bothell Way all the way to Beardsley Boulevard. And it's going to be a complete structural rebuild. As you know, if you've traveled that section of the road, it's in pretty rough shape. So this is a great get from Sound Transit to contribute for that. Then we'll get the work done before their service starts. So otherwise, we would have been doing this in piecemeal, smaller projects, interrupting service. So this was a good contribution. And we hope to start construction on that project in the first quarter of next year. And it should last through about the third or fourth quarter, fourth quarter of next year. And once again, we'll be coming back on November 14th for approval of the resolution and acceptance of the funding agreement for the 185th project. If you have any questions, happy to chat.
Just, I thought I had a question. I guess, just a quick comment. I remember before my time, the city was talking about, where should the transit corridor be in 185th? As, you know, the actual history of this started germinating long before 2018. So I know you guys have been talking about it for a while. I just want to say, well, one, $5 million contributing, thank you to them because we are taking away 59 parking places from people. And for this, for the impact to the public who needs that parking and the city to build to accommodate transit is kind of coming at a high cost for the city, money-wise and personal cost. People are now going to have... I drove 185th yesterday and started, I was like, 59 spots? And I started just estimating cars as I was driving down 185th. I went, set up again, there are, and every spot was filled. And I thought, there easily could be close to 60 spots here. So. So I am glad that Sound Transit is putting some skin in the game on this. And then the removal on Beardsley right before 185th tucks in there, I think that's in front of the dentist office. Is that part of accommodating the roundabout space? I think it's also, some of the parking for, is in front of the older apartments? If my...
This area in the center?
Yeah, that area. Is that to help accommodate the roundabout that's going in?
It's a traffic signal.
Oh, it's a signal?
It's going to be a traffic signal. The roundabout just didn't work.
Okay.
For a lot of reasons.
Okay, now I've got the memo.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, signal. Signal it is. Little Bothell's changed quite a bit, so thank you for this.
Absolutely.
Thank you. A couple of questions. First one, speaking of the $5 million, is that just the total cost of that project? Or is it going to be, we have to also match? It wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. No, the $5 million should fully cover the roadway portion of the construction project. We're also doing some water and sewer work out there while we have the road torn up. And then there's another component we're going to do while we have the road torn up. We're going to put in some conduit to tie the signals together for efficiency while we have it torn up, and that makes the most sense to tear it up.
I should have started by saying congratulations on the promotion and getting into the hot seat. So are we going to hear, like, next year, "Oh, by the way, it's now $6 million, we need to put in some money"?
I really hope not. But, so yeah, we, like I said, we went out to add today, so it's open for contractors to start collecting the information and asking us questions. And our engineer's estimate is within that range to help fund it, so.
Awesome. I have a question about the construction. If you go to where the 98 becomes 185th, there's the apartments over there, but then there's that little median at that bend.
Uh huh.
I know we're widening the, I guess, the right side of the thing, but are we not removing the little medians in the center?
I can't remember exactly what's in the Sound Transit plans. The 185th project that's rebuilding isn't doing any work in this area here.
Yeah, it's going to be only on that.
And most of the parking removal will be done when Sound Transit is doing their project. But we're bringing this to you as part of a resolution before that to clean that up. There are a few spots that we're going to probably stripe and get it all set up as opposed to us putting it back the way it is and then Sound Transit coming back a year later and taking it out. And it just wouldn't make good sense, so.
It'll be interesting to see the plan. It's a very tight turn, even for regular cars. And even if you remove the parking spots on that, you know, right-hand side, it's going to be, for a big bus, you know, they have the long ones.
Yes.
It's going to be a very tight turn. And a lot of people crossing the roads and all that. I, I don't know, I'm not a construction guy. I mean, the expert is right here, but I'm, I feel like there might be something to do. You know, there might be some cost overruns.
I'm going to twist your brain on this one. So I think it's 13 feet because when we built that road, I seem to recall the buses wanted 13 feet wide. And we kind of argued a little bit because that's pretty wide for a lane. Right around the turn, there's actually no parking, but as soon as you get off the turn a little bit, there is, and that's where Transit's a little worried about people opening their doors as they go through. So that's why some of those parking stalls. Believe it or not, the way we're looking at design now is that island tells the driver there's something going on there and slows them down. And if you feel a little comfortable that you might not make that turn, so you slow down, that's not a bad thing. So I would almost counter-argue that we would rather keep it the same, if not narrower, even if you feel a little uncomfortable, to try to slow people down.
Oh, it's not me, I don't mind. I'm just saying.
As a driver, as a driver, we want you to feel a little uncomfortable so that you slow down rather than really comfortable, so you speed up. So I think that's going to stay there, but I'm with Jason. I'm not quite sure what the last iteration showed. The other concern we had there is there's a left-turn lane to go northbound. And we have a lot of delivery trucks because it's so wide, just parking there. And that can't happen when there's buses. So we're trying to shorten up that lane and we're trying to tighten everything up so the Amazon delivery person doesn't think they can just stop right there.
Well, they'll do it anyway.
Yeah, yeah, well. Hopefully not when they have buses barreling down on them, but we'll see. So anyway, I wanted to get you guys thinking about, this is the trade-off. You know, we try to get everybody through, including our own fire department, but the wider we make things and more comfortable we make things, the higher...
Oh, that's not my, wasn't my point. My point was, this might be, once the design starts happening, which is, looks like it's going to be, you know, a year or whatever, because it's a long timeline, whatever. So once they get down the path and the engineers start doing stuff, it's like, oh, we might need to move something, you know, an inch this way or an inch that way, and then that will be more than $5 million.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's my point.
Fair.
Thank you.
Steve, that was on music to my ears, thank you.
No, I was going to say, I appreciate the thought of not Rami being, going slower, you know, around the corner.
Maybe somebody whose name rhymes with Bami.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tommy.
It's Tammy.
It's Tammy. So I really appreciate the thought that's gone into this and making sure that our construction doesn't stop the bus service from happening after it starts. Because I think when there's a route you're excited to take, you're like waiting, 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 and then like, "Oh, there's construction, right where the bus is." So I really appreciate the utility work that's happening when we have the road torn up and just the overall coordination that's happening here. So I don't actually have any questions, I just really like that. So thank you.
I'll jump in with some questions. Agree with what Councilmember Dodd just said. So this proposal is removing 59 parking stalls. How many parking stalls will remain? I feel like I'm asking my children a teacher, or like a math question. I don't know how many math, how many parking stalls there are total, so.
Like, what's the percentage loss for Bothell, kind of a thing?
Just curious.
We didn't do a count of what all the existing parking is in downtown. This was, that was an item that came up in discussion and it became a bit of a lengthy discussion and we decided, you know, it wasn't something that we could really quantify at the time, so.
Yeah, sure.
I got Councilmember Aldrich's permission. We're removing 59 stalls. Don't have the same question, but I was thinking about, so when we closed Main Street, one of the things that was brought up is it was harder to get accessible parking. So one of the stalls close to the barricades is now for people with an ADA parking permit, right? So are we doing any kind of evaluation? Or do we do at a regular cadence an evaluation, make sure, "Okay, there's less stalls on 185th. Do we need an accessible stall or two to have some priority for people who need to park right there versus like a couple of blocks away?" Because there's a lot of street parking down there. And depending on how excited I am to be going to where I'm going, right, I might park further away and just walk. But that's not always an option for everybody, so I'm wondering the question I already asked, so I'm going to stop talking.
So you bring up a great point about the ADA on-street parking requirement. And we've done some assessment of that downtown before. I can tell you that none of the parking spots that are being removed are ADA spots. There is one ADA spot just off of 185th that's remaining that was there at the request of a resident. And so it'll be maintained. Looking at the ADA spots is something we do at some of these projects, and I don't think we did it as part of this project, but maybe a future project.
We have two other projects. One of them is the Main Street, the Ballard project. And as part of the Ballard project, there's some sidewalk work we need to do. So that project's actually looking at ADA in service of events. And then the other one, I can't remember if we kept it in, but I know we looked at 102nd to put an ADA stall, especially north of Main Street because the bus doesn't go all that far now. We're trying not to put on 185th because we don't want buses to go by and an ADA stall right there, that's not ideal. So we'd rather have it on the north-south streets, especially 101st and probably 103rd. But we will probably look on those north-south streets rather than 185th.
That totally makes sense. And I, having a family member who uses a wheelchair, like, sometimes there's a process to unload, you need more space. So we definitely don't want to be competing for space with large buses or fire trucks, heaven forbid, right? So I appreciate that there's a regular review. The last question, I promise, is, do we offer, like, on 185th, do we have any sort of signage that we could put out? That's like, you know, I don't know if there's a sign in your Public Works sign repertoire that's like accessible parking over here, but to point people if they're looking? Is that something anybody does?
I'll look into that.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
One of the things I want to tie back to as well as we think about the removal of parking spots, which is a significant deal, and I heard the comment too of the investment for the community. One of the, just a reminder, and putting it into context, one of the council priorities within moving in and around Bothell too is to look at strategies to better manage parking in order to enhance parking availability and bring options back to council. And so one of the things that we will be continuing to work on too is, as some of these spots go offline, is what are the strategies that we can do to make best use of the inventory that we do have as well? And see if that helps reduce the impact of things. Now, I know some of the impact here along 185th might be outside of the zone of what was contemplated in the priority, but anything that we learn from that will be incorporated in. And then I know too, that like with talking with the campus, they're interested in looking at how do they be part of that solution and how do they partner. So we're looking at making sure that we coordinate on those too. So just as a teaser, F-U-L, that we're going to continue to do more, have more conversations about parking and using, maximizing the use of what we do have as well.
Oh no, I thought those were great questions and I'm really glad that we got to have that little detour of a discussion. And so one of the things that you mentioned earlier was that slowly over time, street parking along this transit corridor will be phased out. I'm just wondering, like, are there, and this might be more of a Steve question, what future projects might we expect to see that would phase more parking stalls out along this transit corridor?
To create more stalls overall, or?
No, to like...
The removal.
The removal, yeah. The removal, yeah.
So actually, the key thing for us is changing our design standard, which currently has parking. So that's one of the things during the comp plan, we will probably come back and say, hey, over the long term, this is what we think it is. We've been trying to work with Transit to slow that down because they want to do it all in one fell swoop. But the street hasn't transitioned completely yet. And we want to be cognizant of the single-family homes and the small businesses and the single-family homes that are currently there. So we, we envision it happening as like Jason said, as private development occurs, which is occurring pretty rapidly. It would transition that way. I think ultimately it would be a three-lane facility. And what that would do would be allow Transit, allow cars to take left turns into driveways and streets, but allow Transit to go. And also when the sirens hit and this, and they're coming westbound, cars and buses can pull over and they can continue to run down the center if they have to. So to me, that's kind of the long-range vision that would happen.
Makes sense to me. Thank you.
Congratulations on the promotion. Thank you for the presentation. Can you tell me, how is ridership changing over the past couple of years?
Ridership on ST? I assume it's increasing, but Sound Transit's ridership numbers are not my area of expertise, sorry to say.
That's something I think that'd be, be interesting to hear about.
Transit agencies right now are struggling. The ridership is not where it used to be and they're trying to get it back. And they're having same issues that everybody else is, is finding enough bus drivers or basically people to actually provide all that service. So I think our hope is that because of the way we set up our downtown, people will be encouraged to use Transit again now that COVID is kind of dwindling. It raises its head, but hopefully in the long run, we will get more Transit users.
The buses that are running along 185th, do we see the ridership coming from within Bothell or ridership outside of Bothell?
I would have to check. If you were to ask me just my opinion, I think it's a little of both. I think the college campus is a big driver. And I think that's why they're all coming, including Swift, why they're coming down here.
And I think we can, we can work with Sound Transit to see what kind of numbers they could provide us. I think one of the things in anticipation of this project too is the connectivity that's going to take place with the Bus Rapid Transit that goes along 405 as well is part of what they're anticipating the growth of this corridor will do is from anyone who's trying to get to 405 from Shoreline on through. And so that's part of their, their calculations for the future. I think it would be interesting to see what the current, current is as the baseline and if that change actually is achieved.
So more of a connection hub type driver, okay. And then the, remind me, the, there were supposed to be three parking garages that were supposed to be built by Sound Transit along 522. If I'm not mistaken, I think we were supposed to get one that, like, how many stalls?
300?
300.
2034 is where it's listed right now. And we're not alone, so there's.
I know we're not alone.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah, but ours is all, our ridership is all BRT, pretty much driven by places for people to park, to get on that, correct?
Well, again, I would say yes and no. I think currently in this transition period where we're trying to get people to use buses, parking rides are important. But the ultimate goal is not a parking ride. It's to have a downtown like ours where people don't have to own a car and they can just hop in. So people would be comfortable buying one car rather than two. I think that's the ultimate goal, not necessarily a parking ride. So this is one topic that we've left open with both Sound Transit and King County Metro, who owns the existing parking ride, talking about TOD and potential opportunities. And this is still a discussion I would like to have with both agencies. Because I think the city staff has some ideas. Because at the same time, just putting this thought in your head. While we want the parking now, in 15 to 20 years, we may not want the parking. We'd rather have something else there. So is there a way that we can look at what we have and transition to that future somehow? And we think there's some ideas, but we have to get King County Metro and Sound Transit on the same page.
Well, what comes to my mind is a walkable, livable city. I think that's what you're talking about. And there's a lot of preparation, a lot of planning. There's a lot of things that can go good and there's a lot of things that can go bad. And I think parking is part of that. You can see how parking, not having parking can affect somebody who wants to go to a downtown from outside of your town. So if I don't live here, maybe I want to come visit Bothell. But if there's no place to park, I'm going to go to the next city. So that, I think it's important to understand that dynamic. I think it's important to understand that people who live in apartments and condos do have cars today. Will they have cars tomorrow? Can't answer. Will they be flying tomorrow? Can't answer that. Will they be on scooters? I, I don't know the answer to that. But I think it's important to look to the future, but also understand how we're living today. Because 30 years from now, 40 years, 50 years from now, we've got to get there. And if we are failing as we're getting there, then are people really going to want to come work, live and play? So I, I just want to throw that out because it's, a lot of the conversations that I'm hearing regionally are about these types of, of things. I like the city manager's comment about fu- fu- future parking options and opportunities. I think that's a conversation this council really definitely needs to have. Even if it's for short-term periods and how we get to the future. I think it's very critical because again, if people cannot come here, go to a restaurant, wine and dine, they're going to go somewhere else where they can find parking. And, and I can tell you, as a person who's tried to come to downtown, it's hard to find parking right now. So, and I live here, so I can walk from my house to downtown. But if I'm outside, I probably wouldn't come, so. I applaud you for looking, forward-thinking about doing the other work that's necessary with the $5 million, making sure you put enough other infrastructure in. I think that's amazing, amazing opportunity that you're doing that as well, the water sewer and, and the signalization piece. So keep up the good work on that. And I would just say that for the 59 spots, we're displacing 59 spots. So that's a lot. You know, when you start thinking of the grand scheme of things, if people are parking to get on Transit there or how they're using that parking, we're displacing it. So hopefully we're finding ways to create parking opportunities for the development that's going to happen around it as well. So, thank you.
Just. I, I, I was just going to say, I, I appreciate the point about we have to get to the future. I also don't want us to be in the business of providing parking for private development. We require parking. We might require less at some point. People will still build what they need to build, but it's not the city's job to park people's cars. And I don't want us to try and, and manage that. I think short-term parking for shopping and restaurants is important. I, I don't want us to try and handle parking for other places. That's part of why I'm so interested and I'm so glad we have the parking management plan, including that it will encourage turnover of spots because people do park there for a long time. I have a friend who lives downtown who plays a game of license plates and how long is that car been in that spot? And that's not what our city-owned street spots are for either. So I, I really appreciate that we have to have a careful evolution, but it's so necessary at this point too. It's a good conversation.
I, I think you bring up a point, a good point. City of Bothell is 13 square miles. And I can't tell you how many times I have heard people say, who live within this 13 square miles, say, I don't come into downtown Bothell. We're talking about people who live in Bothell, because I can't find a place to park. I would like to go eat. That's usually the thing, because, you know, I get, you know, it's all about eating. But I can't find a place to park. So just serving the people who live within Bothell, who want to come into downtown, they're challenged. They don't even come in here anymore because they can't find parking. That's a, that's a huge challenge for them. The other piece is, is that this transit corridor is great for people who live along it. But for the other people who live within the 13 square miles of Bothell, forget about people coming from Monroe needing a parking ride to, to park, to get on the bus. But for the people who live in other parts of Bothell, to get on a bus, who might like to be on a bus, they need to drive their cars to a place where they can get on the bus and go work in Seattle or Everett or Bellevue or wherever they are. So we need to hold Sound Transit's feet to the fire on a parking ride because it's not just serving the larger community around Bothell. It's just serving the people of Bothell who would like to be able to get on a bus or park and be, participate in that community. We say we're welcoming. We want people to feel like they have value. Well, if they didn't, can't even park the car, how much does that communicate to them? That, yeah, you matter, but you don't matter that much. You can go take your business to Woodinville or Lynwood or Bellevue or somewhere else where there is parking. So you guys have a really tough, tough line wa- uh, walk to walk here. So my, my question for you that popped up latently is, I'm, I didn't see sidewalks mentioned, but maybe you put that in here, but it looked like sidewalks pretty much stay within the same right-of-way. We don't need to do a lot of moving and shifting of sidewalks. Is, is that a correct assumption?
The roadway rebuild project's going to stay within the curbs. So we're, we're not going out, so we're not touching this.
Perfect.
So we're rebuilding some sidewalks.
That needs some love.
East of the, on the east end of the project. So as you guys probably know, this section from Ross Road to Beardsley is probably the worst section and it undulates quite a bit. So in order to re-profile, essentially smooth it all out, this existing sidewalk that's on the south side of the road in front of the post office, it's the best kind of landmark there, that's all going to get torn up because you can't rebuild the road and, and keep that sidewalk. So it'll get torn up and then rebuilt.
So to, to make sure all their profiles match.
Yeah, exactly.
But other than that, there's no major massive sidewalk funding that we need to be putting into our budget on reworking sidewalks?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
I did want to retouch on the, the parking ride. So there's opportunities with parking rides that also create housing. But they also give you opportunities for parking after hours. So that's a key that I want to make sure I touch on that while it may be a parking ride during the day. At night, when people want to come to your community, they can park in the parking ride and come to your community. So I wanted to throw that out. I'd also want to throw out the piece about equity. I think it's important for us to realize that, you know, some people can afford to take Uber, some can't, right? And so if we want to bring people into our community, we need to make sure that we're looking at all of these things through an equity lens, right? Whether it's parking stalls at 59 that are being removed, whether it's 300, you know, stall, parking ride, whatever that may be, however people are getting to the bus, first and last mile, all of those things we need to be looking at through an equity lens. And so I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job. But when we talk about, you know, development pays for parking or whatever it is, parking on sites, not the city's business, it is our business to look at things through an equity lens, right? To make sure that we're looking out for our entire community, right? So I want to make sure I drive that home, that these two things, the parking ride and the equity lens are very important and they need to be in every conversation that we have. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. I just want to say thank you.
All right, it got quiet. Do you guys have everything you need from us?
I do. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And congratulations as well. Now you have to work at night.
Yes.
I was watching a comedian the other day that did a whole skit on like night workers. And I was like, she's missing one category. Us. All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 23148, Revenue Requirements for the 2023 Water Sewer and Storm and Surface Water Utility Rate Update Evaluation. City Manager?
Absolutely. And I've got to say, Jason, for infrequently presenting, that was the best use of zoom in on a detailed map that I think I've seen live in a presentation. You made me nervous, but you pulled it off. That was great.
Who did that magic?
That was all Jason while he's at the table. That was impressive. So yes, the third, third item tonight. And we're not zooming back as far as this one. We're not going back to 2018. In fact, council actually will probably remember much of this conversation. On July 18th, we had a, a study session where we talked about the utility rate update overview, some milestones, the schedule and what was going to go into that. So now we're at the threshold of having a more detailed conversation. I know it'll be part of the presentation, but I'll just also reinforce that there's going to be three more touches between now and the end of the year on this topic. So you're gonna, you're gonna hear about it a little bit more. There's going to be some results after tonight's input on the 14th, a public hearing on the 21st of November. And then as we consider the entire mid-biennium update, that'll be on December 5th. Nice. With that, I think we're getting a little phone-to-front help on sharing the presentation. But Boyd, do you want to do some introductions and get things kicked off while we're waiting for Laura to bring up the press?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have an overview of the 2024 rate revenue requirements. And with us tonight, we have Tagay Aker and Amanda Levine from FCS Group, a consulting firm that specializes in municipal utility rate evaluations. Please. So tonight we'll present the results of the rate revenue evaluation. We're not asking for any action at this time. We'll be sharing a timeline of future council touchpoints on the next slide, please. So just a quick overview, we last spoke with you on July 18th. We described our outreach approaches, our discount programs. We had some really good feedback from council to look at utility rates where rate payers are paying for their use. And we also discussed some potential approaches to support smaller homes, middle housing ADUs with facility charge connection charges that are right-sized to the, the reduced burden of those uses. We also had some discussions about using non-utility funds to pay for utility work. We did work with finance briefly and, and discuss this with other staff. And there really isn't a mechanism where we can, utility funds or enterprise funds are supposed to stand alone. So there really isn't a mechanism where we can, we can guarantee funds from other sources. However, with that said, we are always looking for grants, loans, other one-time revenue sources such as ARPA funds or others that could help reduce the total cost to do improvements and on our utility system and that therefore helps reduce rates. So tonight we're talking in the study session about revenue requirements and briefly touch on municipal code updates. And then our next meeting is November 14th. It was originally scheduled for November 7th, but that meeting's been canceled. We'll be then discussing cost of service, which can kind of fine-tune overall revenue requirements for each type of use, such as a commercial billing or residential billing and how those pay their fair share. And then also present draft ordinances for the Title 18 updates. Following that, we'll have a public hearing to seek additional information from the public and comment. And then after that, we'll be bringing this forward to council for consideration of adoptive, adopting the rates and a January 1 effective date. So tonight, once again, our overview will look at overall revenue requirements. And Tagay and Amanda will be discussing that and also comparisons with neighboring jurisdictions. And then we'll kind of wrap up the information session here with some of our municipal code updates, just brief overview of house gaming items and discount program discussions.
All right, thanks Boyd for that introduction. So tonight we'll be talking about what we call revenue requirements. And when we use that term, all that means is how much revenue is required to fund each utility, water, sewer, stormwater on a standalone basis. And when we look at that analysis, we keep in mind fiscal policies. So making sure you have enough money in the bank for operating reserves, capital reserves. We make sure that rates are covering your operating expenditures. And then those two bottom rectangles there, rate-funded capital and existing and new debt service, that has to do with how you fund your capital program. And when you add that all together, that's your annual revenue need for each utility. So that's sort of a broad overview of the results that we'll be looking at tonight. So we'll go through a couple of slides per utility. We'll cover the water revenue requirements first. And, and this slide focuses on, you have that column chart on the left there. That's your capital projects for the 2023 through 29 period. Mostly water main projects, but there are a couple of reservoir projects. In total, about $31 million. The rate strategy that we'll be talking about tonight for the water utility results in about 60% of those projects being funded either from cash on hand, rate revenues or capital facility charges. Those are those one-time charges from growth and development. There are some grants available that the city has already secured. And we are assuming about $11 million of borrowing. So about a third of that overall capital program. And, and I will note that the 23 through 29 period largely lines up with the city's capital facilities plan. So this shows the, the revenue needs of the water utility. You have in those darker bars there, the operating and maintenance expenditures. On top of that, you have a little sliver of green, that's the existing debt service already on the books. And then you have new debt service there in that purply pink color. Anything above that is available for funding capital projects with rates. And so you can see there in 2023, comparing those obligations with current rates, that solid black. that solid black line, you're able to cover your operating expenditures, you're able to cover your debt service for the water utility, with enough left over to fund some part of the capital program with cash and that gold color. So a-annual increases to help maintain that rate-funded capital amount would be just over six percent per year. So on a, on a bimonthly basis, that's about a six-dollar increase every two months for a typical single-family customer, and is relatively in line with what was adopted, uh, about a year ago for twenty-twenty-three's rate adjustment.
Yeah, just to add to this a little bit, um, when we did our water system plan back in twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we did a fiscal evaluation, and what that showed is, um, uh, to, to actually complete the work we need to do, that's capital, um, the projects and operation maintenance, we had a six-percent rate increase that gradually descended down to three by the twenty-thirty timeframe. So these numbers are higher than that. Um, what I will say is, we, um, also looked at placeholders in the, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and those were on the, the six, five, six percent for the next couple of years, and we did that because of inflation and the rest. So these numbers are somewhat consistent with what we have looked at in the past. They are higher because of the escalated project costs. Um, one assumption that was added in here is a two-percent increase per year in SPU water purchase. And what I'll say is, we haven't had a purchase, uh, price increase in the last four years from SPU, and, and right now, there's no indication that there will be. So when we see numbers like this, what I'd, I'd really hope, uh, Council would focus on is the twenty-three, twenty-four, maybe twenty-five, the short term, um, because the, the twenty-four numbers are, in our opinion, they're, they're pretty solid. This is the revenue we need to keep coming, but, uh, understand that every year we look at these, and if SPU wholesale charges don't increase by two percent, you'll see a corresponding decrease, or if we get additional grants or loans. So I know these numbers are, are higher than the three to six percent from our water system plan, but, um, we are trying to, to look at that long-term trend and, and requirements.
Yeah, thanks Boyd. It, it's always a snapshot in time with the data that we have available, and it's always good to revisit these every so often as new information comes up.
Next slide, please.
All right, moving on to the, the sewer revenue requirements, you can see there about half of the amount of capital compared to the water utility. With the rate plan that we'll talk about on the next slide, you can see most of these will be covered with either cash on hand, rate revenues, or CFCs, and there is a, a small amount of grants that are incorporated into the forecast. No new borrowing is assumed for the sewer utility revenue requirement forecast. You can see there, you know, on average, somewhere between half a million dollars, up to about three to four million dollars per year in capital projects. Mostly main-related projects, but there is a lift station project, uh, this year. You do, you do contract out through King County for wastewater treatment services, so these are more of the collection, uh, conveyance of sewage to those treatment plants.
Next slide, please.
So on an annual basis, smaller increases in sewer, uh, forecasted than in water. Uh, you can see there primarily our costs are operating and maintenance. This includes what you pay to King County for wastewater treatment. Uh, there is a, a sliver there in green, a little bit of existing debt service on the books, and then above that, you can see an amount available for capital. The four-and-a-quarter percent is designed to help maintain rates to continue to cover operating costs with inflation. This includes forecasted increases for King County wastewater treatment, somewhere in the five to six percent per year over the next four or five years, and also maintain some amount each year to set aside for rate funding, uh, the city's capital projects. And that four-and-a-quarter is about a seven to eight-dollar increase every two months for a typical single-family customer.
And just to add to that, the, the sewer utility is strong in a, in a cash balance, um, sense. When we did this work previously, uh, in twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, you'll notice that the twenty-four is less than the projected inflation, um, at least for the city of, of four-point-five percent, and it's less than the five-point-seven-five percent increase for treatment at King County. And that kind of reflects that the sewer utility is strong, with a good cash, uh, cash balance, I'm just gonna say. But what's really important about this is that, uh, when FCSG looks at this, he looked out, what, twenty-thirty-one? Yeah, it's what's a little.
A little less than ten years, yeah.
So it's a longer-term snapshot, um, than we typically look at. We, we typically look at a seven years, so I, I think we'll see those lower percents, um, from both, uh, cost inflation and what we had as a placeholder in the twenty-four budget, and wastewater treatment is, is, is good. It shows that we're relatively strong. And, and once again, as Tagay said, uh, the real driver here is the wastewater treatment increases, which are, are rapidly increasing annually. So we're, we're happy that these numbers are less than those.
Next slide.
And third and final utility, uh, stormwater revenue requirements. Similar amount of capital compared to the water utility for the same time period. Front-loaded, as you can see, in the twenty-three through twenty-five period, averaging just over six million dollars per year. Uh, we're expecting about sixty percent of those costs would be covered from cash, rates, and capital facility charges. There's a fair amount of grants that the city has already secured, so that helps quite a bit, and we are projecting a, a little bit of borrowing to fund part of that capital program, but it's, uh, just, you can see there in that purple slice, about fifteen percent of the overall, uh, capital funding strategy.
And just to add to this one, you'll, you'll see that we're pretty heavy in, in expenses through twenty-three to twenty-five. Uh, we have several large projects coming up. What you'll see as you go further out in time is that we've had to defer projects. The, the fund balance on the stormwater utility is relatively, it, it's not as strong with respect to a cash basis. So you'll, we, we always have the opportunity balancing work and rates and expenses and, and, and what we spend money on. But you can see this, this one, it's really apparent when you compare, or when you compare to the water and sewer, that, yeah, we've got some big, high-cost projects, and, uh, and we basically use up a lot of our, our cash balance reserves before we get to using, uh, less for, for fewer projects and pushing projects out in the future.
And so for the stormwater revenue requirement, we're forecasting five-point-seven-five percent, uh, per year, a little bit less than what was adopted for twenty-twenty-three. That would be an increase of, of about two dollars, uh, every two months, equivalent to that five-and-three-quarters percent. And you can see there, there's a, uh, a little bit of a jump in your operating and maintenance costs in twenty-twenty-four. That eats up the stormwater utility's ability to rate fund some capital projects, so that does recover over time in that yellow bar that increases, uh, beginning in twenty-twenty-five. So that's part of the rate strategies to continue to allow the stormwater utility to cover the debt service, cover the O and M, but also rate fund a portion of that capital program.
Yeah, and these, these increases of five-point-seven-five percent is, is higher than what we had as a placeholder for twenty-twenty-four. Part of this is, we were actually going in the red, uh, by twenty-twenty-six. We had pushed projects out as far as we could, but even with the projects we'd planned for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-nine CFP, we ran out of money by twenty-twenty-six. So this, this helps take care of some of that, um, issue with respect to not having cash available on hand to, to do the work that's been programmed.
So we put together a, a three utility rate survey with some other jurisdictions in the region. You can see there, towards the right, the city of Bothell's twenty-twenty-three rates for a typical single-family customer, about three-hundred-and-six dollars every two months. Uh, it's just above North Shore, just below Kirkland. With the proposed rate increases that we were covering in the previous slides, the three-oh-six would turn into, uh, three-twenty-two every two months in twenty-twenty-four. And, and these other cities and water districts, these are the twenty-twenty-three rates. So many of these utilities, I'm sure, are considering rate adjustments for twenty-twenty-four as well. Uh, one thing we wanted to point out is that the, the overall increase, if you look at the water, sewer, stormwater between twenty-three and twenty-four is about five percent, which is just under the, uh, local consumer price index for the year, which is about five-point-four percent. So it's, that's pretty much in line with, uh, overall inflationary pressures in the area.
And we do look for information from other cities and jurisdictions about their rate in- increases or potential rate increases in the discussions, but Bothell's typically a little ahead of the game on these, so, uh, there's not a lot of information out there at this time. What I will say is, even when you look at Alderwood, you'll notice, within the city of Bothell, portion of Alderwood, that the Green Bay and the stormwater would be the same as ours. So we had to look at these more as holistic, uh, utilities. So, um, Alderwood still has a, a, a lower rate, and that's mostly because they, they pay less for water. They're not purchasing water from SPU. And then a quick overview of the municipal code updates. The, these are all minor, we typically call these housekeeping, uh, but right now, um, everyone's, for residential, your annual, your, your bimonthly sewer rate is based on your winter average consumption. And it's set up that way, so if folks use a lot of water for irrigation or recreation in the summer, that that's not counted for, um, with respect to their sewer use, because that's not going down the drain. So the water in the winter that enters your home, we, we say that represents what's discharging a sewer, and that's your, your annual rate. What we're proposing to do is provide a little bit of flexibility here, uh, for folks that purchase sewer services from Bothell but have their water services outside of Bothell. We don't have data to calculate their annual sewer use. So what has been requested by, um, residents or community members is, and customers, is can you use our water use from the district to calculate how much sewage is going down your drain? So we're adding some flexibility for that to be considered. It's not something that would be done on every, um, use, use, but it's, it's, it's there as a tool. And the same with, uh, a home. If you own a home and you've established a baseline winter use, once again, it's calculated in the summer, and someone buys that home, the utility doesn't know what that use will be for the forthcoming year, because your, your sewer usage is based on your previous year's winter consumption. So for new homeowners, we have to default to the annual city average, which is pretty fair. But we've had, uh, folks complain that, hey, um, this home doesn't have much use because it has, doesn't have many, doesn't have many folks, or it doesn't have many appliances, or this or that, and we think our burden's gonna be equal to or less as a previous homeowner. So we're trying to provide some flexibility, just because this is a frequent flyer with respect to complaints. We don't have the basis for water usage for you for the previous year, so we apply the average, and now we're providing some flexibility. Okay, if you wanna provide additional information, it can be considered to help make sure that we, uh, charge appropriately. Uh, wastewater surcharge, we have, um, one user in the city that, uh, generates additional, uh, effluent. It has, uh, higher, uh, organic content, and so, uh, King County charges them for that extra effluent, um, load. Um, and the way they charge that is through the city, and then we bill the, uh, the user, because that's how we're set up. There's no direct billing with King County. So we have relatively weak language that states we can pass on that charge, so we're just reinforcing that language. Uh, water leak adjustment, this is a really cool thing that Bothell does that not everyone does, but if you have a, a burst main, and you can demonstrate that, hey, my water usage for this event was because I had a pipe freeze and fail. You can provide that information, the timeframe, and demonstrate that you've hired a plumber to fix that leak and address the leak, so it's not ongoing, and the city will rebate, um, that lost water, which is really cool. Uh, utility takes a small hit, but it's, it's very equitable. What we've been finding, though, is, um, one or, um, some folks are thinking that just turning off that broken pipe and, you know, isolating it is, is a repair. And that's not what this is intended for. This is not to, to, um, to just say, look, okay, you, you had an issue, and you didn't fix it, the, the utility will replace, you know, reimburse you for the cost. It really is, you had an issue, and you chose to fix it correctly, and the utility can, can credit back those dollars. So we're just trying to make it more equitable for, for all users on that. And then the last one would be, and I hope I explain that well, but you'll ask me a question in a second, if not. The last one is the rates, we have to annually codify rates, and so that'd be part of the, uh, the, uh, BMC update. Next slide, please. So a quick summary, um, what we have right now, and this is if we apply, this is just across the board. Um, if we're to, uh, continue with the planned improvements and continue operation maintenance at the currently budgeted, um, levels, we'd be looking at a six-point-two-five percent water increase, four-point-two-five sewer, five-point-seven-five storm, effective January first. Some of the council considerations, we'd really like to hear is, is feedback on that. Um, but also typically what we do is we do it across-the-board increase. Um, all rate categories are, are, are seeing a four-point-two-five percent increase. Um, FCSG is doing a cost-of-service evaluation. That means they're looking at individual rate classes within the water utility, and our, um, if the overall water increase is six-point-two-five, what does that mean? Does that mean that, um, commercial is currently paying their fair share of the burden? Um, and everyone, and with respect to residential, so everyone gets a six-point-two-five? Or do we dive into the actual usage a bit more, and we find out that commercial may be slightly underpaying or, or resident? I'm just using this example, so that their increase would be slightly higher than what you'd see for residential. So this work is still ongoing. One approach is to continue for twenty-twenty-four with some type of across-the-board, um, increase, and then look at twenty-twenty-five, because this is an ongoing living, um, uh, effort to see if we want to implement, um, different charges. Um, I'd really like Tagay to talk a bit about the cost-of-service analysis.
You know, so when we talk about the revenue requirement, I, I like to think about it, you know, how big does the pie need to be to fund each utility? And the cost-of-service analysis separately looks at how do we slice up that pie? And, and I think Boyd did a good job of, of walking through an example, you know, for the water utility. If the overall revenue need is six-and-a-quarter, uh, it could be that, uh, we find some customer groups are subsidizing other groups or vice versa. And so you may have one class that might be under six-and-a-quarter, and one class that might need to increase more than six-and-a-quarter. Uh, it's, it's a policy choice that Council has, uh, always could apply rates, uh, we call across-the-board, so everybody receives that six-and-a-quarter percent adjustment. Uh, if we find that there's a, a strong case for a, a different adjustment for certain types of customers, that's something that we'd bring forward for consideration, and would be a, a, a policy choice at that time in the mid-November council meeting.
Yeah, and, um, we've discussed the BMC's up, uh, updates. We'd like to discuss a little bit more and hear feedback, and really wanna reiterate that what we're trying, the goal for this is to, to understand what should be applied for January first, twenty-twenty-four. The rest of this work is extremely valuable for forecasting and the rest, but we do fine-tune these things every year. Uh, we may get more grants, we may see that wastewater treatment is, is less, or that the two-percent placeholder for SPU, uh, uh, cost increases doesn't occur. Um, so I just really wanna reiterate this, but this is a, yeah, it's, it's a really good snapshot in time at the current, uh, with our current understanding, and it, it helps us, set us up for the future. So that is what we have to present, and we'd really like to, uh, to hear your thoughts.
Are we setting a pattern? A little bit. Um, so, and I'm expecting great ideas, better ideas to follow here. Uh, you want some feedback on some things? I, as I was going through this, and I was looking at, uh, some of the rate increases, which I understand that they're warranted. I think about people across Bothell who are on fixed incomes, and it's a bimonthly charge. It's gonna hurt a lot of folks in a lot of areas. And, um, I don't know how you inventory all those folks. I don't know how you do it, and so my inclination is, then it's gonna have to be across-the-board, because if you really wanna be fair, you're gonna have to go knock on a lot of doors on people who have fixed incomes, and there's a lot of people in Bothell who are on fixed incomes. North to south, east to west, they're everywhere. So, um, I, it, I don't think that we have the manpower to go inventory all that and decide how we're going to split the costs on that. But, uh, I don't think, just because someone lives in a single-family home, smaller single-family home, on a fixed income, it, it, it's automatically assumed that they can bear a more disproportionate. on a fixed income, it's automatically assumed that they can bear a more disproportionate share on something that over a year is going to be a big hit. And everything, it's not just this, costs are going up on everything. And I look at it sometimes and I think, where does the madness stop? I mean, I'm using a very judgmental word there, I'm sorry. But where do you stop this cycle of this? And who's going to be brave enough to start that? And I think in order for it to happen, it's pretty catastrophic, and I don't think any of us want to go there to start, do some course correcting. But that's where I fall on that. The winter rates, could you refresh my memory on the day, what month to what month do we establish?
Basically, the last two months of the year and the first four months. So it's November, December, January, February, March, April.
Okay.
And it used to be May, June, and council considered reducing that because we're seeing warmer springs. So we've taken out of the equation.
Okay. And once again, Alderwood water looks very attractive. And for a long time, I've had Alderwood water envy. I don't know if you're on, I know Ben's on Alderwood water.
Oh, I am, and you're welcome to be my neighbor.
So Alderwood water envy still continues. And then I have another question. People, we have people who are in septic all around Bothell. Do we know who they are and do they not get charged for sewer?
Yeah, we actually, we know.
Once again.
Yeah, they're not charged for sewer. Municipal code actually requires that they connect at some point in the future should their septic fail. Because GMA, centralizing utilities and all the rest, we get higher density and.
Right, right. I'm just sitting there thinking, we have our water utilities, and as a city, are we assuming everybody's on sewer, so everybody pays sewer? But evidently not. We've got that.
Yeah. And just if I can, you mentioned this, everything is too expensive. And we are, this is just, sorry, cup half full. It is less than inflation, which is good when you look at the last couple of years. But what I'd really, what I really wanted to say is, we heard loud and clear about our discount programs and the rest and making it easy. So as part of this, and I glossed over the discount programs, we're really looking toward using the county process that is people already doing for their property taxes. And then we looked at some, there were a bunch of ideas from council with respect to other programs that could be a good indicator for economic distress. And the one that we found that is pretty usable is the SNAP, the food stamp program. Because that is something that has some really specific requirements, and it's really need-based. And so that's part of what we have for consideration with respect to our. And that's not necessarily the code, but that's stuff that we can, we implement. So we're looking to, we're trying to help with fixed income and.
Yeah, I will say, in our past, in our family, when our family was young and the budget was exceedingly tight, our income was just above where you could get those helps. And for people who were just below it and they had helps in a variety of things, they actually ended up having more discretionary money to spend on things than we did because we were just above that little cutoff line where you would get help. And so I am, I have a lot of sympathy for people who are just living on the edge where they don't qualify and their needs are not recognized in, for food and other things. And yet the burden of day-to-day living is pretty heavy on those folks. So, you know, approach that information and use it, but realize that there is a good chunk of population that are really struggling and don't ever get recognized. And it puts a lot of, it puts a lot of pressure on people, you know, just to try to get through a day and make things, and, you know, it's a ripple effect. Families struggle, and so their relationships struggle. So I don't want to change, I don't want to change the mood of this on when we're talking about what we're flushing down the toilets, but just, and pouring out of our faucets. But it does have an effect, and we need to be mindful of that.
I have a quick question. For the leak adjustment, once they repair the broken pipe, do we reimburse them for all of the extra water that they used? Or do we reimburse them for the difference between what we pay for it and what they?
It's associated with, which is calculated to be lost. And it doesn't happen very often.
Yeah.
And you're restricted to this occurring once every three years because we wouldn't want someone to potentially use that as a way to lose water or something like that. So, yeah.
Okay, but it is everything, it's not the delta?
It's the delta.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding. I'll double check, but it's pretty vague, and it's not vague. It's not specific to you shall do this, this, this in the code, but it allows for us to reimburse for the lost water associated with the event. So it is what you can, you subtract the base use from what was shown. The delta, it'd be the delta.
But the delta between a normal use and this use, not the delta between what we pay SPU? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Normal use, leak, difference.
Would never have asked that question unless that happened to me earlier this year.
I have a couple of questions. I really appreciate all the detail about our rates and just the comparison to the utilities. Having, I think, like four different water utilities serving people who live in city limits. That's as we just saw between councilmembers, Jones and I, we have different utilities for literally every kind of utility that serves our houses being on different parts of the city. So I, okay, the first question is just for the council considerations. I would want to see the different proposed rate increases, both across the board and on different classes of usage. I'd want to see that to understand just, I think it's important when we talk about, we don't want, to be fair, we need to know what we're doing. We need to know what the different options are, you know? I think the other question I had, so you had brought up people who don't have city water but have city sewer. How common is that?
It's on the order of, I don't know the number exactly, but I think it's 200 to 400. It's not uncommon because the sewer is dictated by gravity.
Yeah.
So we have areas that overlap with our adjacent purveyors where we provide water because it's a pressurized system, but the effluent goes to them or vice versa.
Okay.
So it's really trying to make sure that we get the best service for owners out there, and so, yeah.
Can't work against gravity, makes sense. And actually, I just had two questions, so thank you.
I'll also add that my household was a lucky recipient of a, we think you have a leak letter. It was several years ago when, and I just really appreciated that, that it was just very understanding. And there was also like some guidance offered to us as homeowners of like how you might fix that leak. And so for us, it was a shower head that needed to be replaced, and we replaced it. And we got money back, and it was a happy ending to that story. And so I am grateful for that program that you have in place. I think that, you know, people like my family are sometimes the recipient of that grace. And then, so I just wanted to like say that as a, I think we're, I'm grateful that we do that for our community. I think when it comes to these considerations that you're asking for us here, like councilmember Dodd, I would like to see both. I am intrigued about the cost of service and the unique demands that you mentioned. I'm wondering, is that possible to do in the multi-year rate adjustment strategy as well? Like, it's, the way I would read this, it's not this or that. Could it be and?
Yeah, and we were talking about this just before this meeting, and it's tough. I mean, this has been a pretty big lift to get completed, and it just, I can't believe it's October. So when I look at these dates, it's like, holy smokes, this is, we're almost at the end of the year. So one thing that Tagi and I discussed is, across the board is consistent with what's done in the past. But the cost of service is there. That means that if there are any fine tuning, you know, if there's work to fine tune with respect to that, that could be completed for 2025. Hearing your reactions to this, it's almost like maybe additional public outreach would have to occur because it's different than what's happened in the past. And so it is not this or that. It could be that, well, we're near the end of 2023, and it could be across the board for 2024. But direction, yeah, we need to be looking at this cost of service for rates in 2025, which, once again, you know, it's just even explaining the process takes some time. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, and I appreciate that because that, it would, I think it would be very hard to, in, you know, what the month we have, to transition strategies completely. And so if we were to go to that strategy in the future, it makes sense to me that we would align it with our bio-budget process, and it would come up then. And then there was something else that came to mind while you were speaking, but I've lost it. So maybe it'll come back.
I didn't give you directions, so I just want to say I agree with Councilmember Alder. It's like, I'd like to see that information, but I heard the stress in your voice when you started talking about doing it next year, and I don't want to stress you out.
It is, I mean, it's hard to convey.
Yeah.
And it could be really tough. And I'm just making these numbers up. Oh, okay, well, commercial rates are going up 6.7%, residential rates are going up 5.4%. It's like, wait a second. And so it's not really fair to give this information this late in the year, but this is just how long it takes to go. So your question is a good question, and it'd be a really good approach to face this.
I remembered what my question was. So, sorry. Don't, write it down, don't forget. Okay, good. So when it comes to that phased approach, if we were to move it towards the multi-year strategy, what are like the administrative benefits of that? Like, does it make, is it less of a burden on staff? Is it, is there a cost savings that comes from only revisiting it every two years instead of every year? Like, I guess I'm kind of wondering, like, what are some of the pros and cons of switching to that strategy?
I'm going to take a shot, then I'm going to give it to Tagi. So once again, these are across-the-board rates. This is the revenue we're recommending we need to continue with the O and M and day-to-day operations, the capital facilities. So to go to cost of service, there really is no additional burden. I mean, it'd be, this should go up by, you know, X percent, and this should go up by Y percent. The different slices of the pie. Just reallocate those revenue from one class to the other based on their burden. All the work's being done to demonstrate that. And so it'll be there in the report, ready to go. And we find out that based on, Tagi's going to make this much more clear. Based on this, the current rate for water, commercial class, is only 91% of what it should be without a rate adjustment. And residential is then paying 109%. I'm just making numbers up. So in the future, you may want to use those ratios to fine tune the increases so it shows the real burden for each class. So it's very simple, it's just, it's a very, it's a very complicated message. So the work would be done, it'd be ready to go, and then it's the messaging and making sure everyone understands. And Tagi, anything to add to that?
Yeah, so a little bit of a brief overview. When we look at a water utility, for example, we try to break it up into different functional components. So there is the costs associated with the, you know, average usage throughout the year. There is additional water purchase costs and pumping related to delivering peak demand during those summer months. Different customer groups have different fire flow requirements, so there's different costs associated with that. So we would try to look at, here's your overall cost of the utility. Here's how it breaks up into the different functions. And then we can say, okay, we know, single-family will usually have more summer usage, a higher peak, than say, multifamily customers. So they get a bigger share of peak-related costs. Commercial customers typically will have a higher fire flow requirement because of bigger structures. So they'll get a larger slice of the fire-related costs compared to single-family. So we try to break it up in those ways and then compare that against how each customer group is currently paying their rates and how that, as Boyd said, it could be one group's under-recovering, another group's over-recovering, and we could potentially phase that in over time to address that over, you know, multiple years. Does that help answer that question?
I think you might have answered a different question, and that the question may not have been, like, I may not have been able to clearly explain what I was asking. So right now, we've been doing across-the-board, and I see all of the effort and time and process that goes into that. And you're proposing that possibly we could switch our strategies to a multi-year rate adjustment. How would the, how would the administrative effort on your end change if we were doing it multi-years instead of yearly?
Yeah, and, yeah, thank you for, yeah, I should have answered that much more simply. The administrative effort is very small. It's, we'll have the back of information, we'll understand that information, and then it's coming. Let's say we did across-the-board this year, and next year it was, let's look at the cost of service evaluation and see how we can fine tune those rates. We did apply those at that time. So it really, to me, it's, the work's done, and it'd be more of the messaging and making sure that council likes what they see and that the citizens understand why one rate class, commercial, may be going up or down more so than compared to a residential class.
So just to check my understanding, the amount of effort's pretty similar between the two approaches. It would have to happen anyway because you'd study it every year. Yeah, the data is always coming in. Yep, okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. I had the same thing, but I just wanted to put the increase in perspective. It was, I was just, correct me, it's late night math. 16.25% increase, we're talking about across the three categories, water, sewer, storm, right? Is that going to be charged to every single household? Like, their bills are going to go up by 16% or?
Yeah, let's say that the total bill will go up about five point.
About 5%.
5%, yeah.
Okay.
And those are the components of, so some are slightly higher than 5 and, well.
Yes, sewer is your biggest utility in terms of a bi-monthly cost. And so it's a little bit lower than 5. So, yeah, averages out about 5% for a typical single-family customer.
And I noticed, I mean, this is where the analysis will be interesting by segment of user. I mean, because then you, your line's not going to always be a straight line. You're probably going to have more of a curve at some point or something, or maybe up and down or by category. Because I feel like we're estimating at a straight line, but things are changing all the time as we saw just now, you know? So is that, is that part of the multi-year, would the multi-year analysis help with allowing the estimates to be more precise?
Yeah, this is actually a really good question because council could come back and say, there's zero increases here. And what does that mean? That means in the following years, we use the same math to determine those rates, right? So what's really good about this approach is it is averaged the same over time. Each year we'll look at it to see how we're doing, and it may be slightly higher or maybe slightly lower. If that's, yeah, so it won't look like this. We're having to forecast it that way with a known in 2024, but each year we'll look at this, and we may be really fortunate with grants. We're always pushing for grants. And then the revenue requirement will be lowered accordingly. And what's nice about this is the model that FCSG has created, we typically ask for their assistance each year because we'd like to have a third and fourth party look at our work, and that type of information can be plugged into it. Tagi, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, right now, we're looking at about a six-year timeframe for cost forecast purposes. So you may have a couple of projects in year five, year six, that you want to be saving up for in advance. So that's one of the advantages of looking at a longer time period for the forecast. But when it comes to rate setting, you still have the option every year to adopt, you know, one year of rates at a time if that's your preference.
Oh, so it's one year rates at a time versus multiple, it looks like in the next five years going to be?
Historically, the city, you know, past few years have looked at it every fall. These are the rates for the next year. You know, council could say, we want to adopt two years of rates at a time. And then, you know, one year from now, we don't have to revisit this. And then, you know, one year from now, we don't have to revisit this. But that's, you know, there's pros and cons of, you know, looking at every year. It's a little bit more time to prepare the numbers, to, you know, present in front of council. But every two or three years, there could be some changes in the in the meantime that could help update the rates. So there there are pros and cons of either approach. As Boyd said, you could get good news, maybe you got more grants than you were anticipating. You could get some bad news, maybe water purchase cost goes up faster than anticipated. So it's it's always a bit of a moving target, but based on the information we have today, these are the overall rate adjustments that we think are needed to make sure each utility is healthy going forward.
How will breaking up, you know, the the classes? Would that be helpful at all when we set rates then? Or do we say for, like, does it, is it helpful for us to see what the classes are and then set the rates for those? Or is it like, doesn't, is that difference so negligible that it doesn't even matter?
And that's what we'll find out when we finalize the analysis is it could be that classes are pretty close to what the cost of service is and and maybe the cross-the-board adjustment is warranted. We could find out that there there's some significant subsidies and that might be something council could address over, you know, a phased-in multi-year period. We don't have that information yet.
And we're having it this year then? And the next one, whatever, next month? Okay. I know you have it there. My back is to it, so I don't have it.
Sorry, and just to add to this, I mean, coincident, having, so this is an effort every year. I think it's a very valuable effort for council and the community to understand that they were watching the budget very closely. But it it could be at some point in the future, it's like we're doing a biannual budget. Let's get two years' worth of understanding what the rate's going to go because that gives people certainty, understanding and the rest. It does streamline the process. Staff would still be doing the work to make sure that everything's balancing out. But that that is a good one to consider. It's it's nothing that would probably be requested to be acted on now, but it's could be discussed as part of the next biannual budget. So I just, I just want to throw that out because that's, it's a, it's a good thing to look at.
Can I also make a request? We have math study sessions earlier?
Saturdays.
Saturdays and mornings?
I was, I was going to say I did the math and I helped someone double check. 5.41% average.
Pretty precise.
Is that weighted or unweighted?
I, I remembered my third question and it's it's a little out there, so bear with me. You mentioned that Alderwood has lower rates because they don't buy water from SPU. Do we get, and I'm not advocating for anything. There's a lot, I'm sure, that goes into that decision that is not part of this discussion. But do we pick where we buy our water or are we kind of set with SPU because of where we are?
We're kind of set. We have an agreement with SPU. We'll be bringing that to council for updating that agreement. We're trying to provide, we have provided feedback to SPU that we should have a little bit of flexibility because, you know, it it with that, we'll get into more of this when we look at the the franchise agreement. But no, it's, we're set up to serve the south half of the city from from Tolt, from SPU. It's it's, uh, there's some significant hurdles to, one, the water is, may or may not be available from the snowplowed water supply. But we have brought those discussions forward with with folks up north, especially for inner ties and some of our lower pressure zones. So it's something we work on, but I wouldn't be thinking that any time in the future, we could just say, okay, we're going to turn off SPU and turn on Alderwood because that that has some serious repercussions.
Yeah, no, and I didn't think it was like changing the company that delivers your office supplies. Like, I realized, I just was curious about that note. Thank you.
I guess I'll weigh in now. First, thank you for the presentation, the information. We are getting better at this. The information is coming through to where it's more understandable. And I think the community can relate more to it as we're starting to do these presentations. With that said, there are a lot of increases, a lot of new taxes, a lot of things that are happening throughout the region. And it's putting a lot of stress on a lot of folks. And so I appreciate and applaud you for thinking through that because it is a big deal, right? 1% here, 2% there, 6%, 5%. And you add it up over 100 things, a $22 here could be 100 of them, 10 of them, five of them. And for parts of our community that are on those fixed incomes, it's important. So I I applaud you for for thinking through that. I think having these conversations, if it's not a huge admin burden, having it yearly is important. But I also think long-term is important and understanding the projects that potentially could be coming in the long term. I think in past conversations, we've talked about different facilities, capital projects that need to be done. Understanding what those are potentially, how those are coming, what years they could be coming will help a council make a better decision in the future. So hopefully, we can continue to have these conversations and in those conversations, talk a little bit more about those future projects that could be coming down the pipeline. The increase, I, what really drew my attention on the increase was not this year, the $22 this year, it was seven years from now. And I look at that seven years from now and I say, you know, an average home bi-monthly paying four to almost 450 a month. That's a heavy lift, right? But I know we're doing our best. I know we're looking at things. We're we're being smart. I would say let's continue to be great at getting grants. Let's continue to be great at getting grants because that's one of the things in the past we've been really great with. Councilmember Zornz brought up averaging, talking a little bit about programs and and the and the single number and rates and all that. I think if 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 we can look at maybe averaging, so for instance, if your cutoff point is, you make $100, this is an example. And anybody who's making 99 qualifies for that subsidies program. And then you're making 100 and you don't qualify, the person who's making 100 may have different circumstances within their house that they need that subsidy, right? So maybe we can look at averaging that out and seeing what those, what what makes, you know, maybe 100 gets so much, maybe 99 gets so much, just kind of average it out. So great, great point, Councilmember Zornz. I'm glad you brought that up. So maybe we can look at that in the future. I was really drawn to conversations we've had in the past about types of housing. And tonight it was brought up, if you live in a certain house, you may get a subsidies based on your usage or something like that. I hope we have a very robust discussion around this because being out in the community right now, one of the, one of the things that was brought to my attention was I'm a single person living in a home that I bought here 22 years ago. I use no water. I use no sewer, right? You take that person on a fixed income is different than a household, same size, that has six kids living in that household. However, those six kids, they may be on a fixed income too, right? So they may need help, right? So and they're living in the same size home. So I think that we really need to have robust discussions around the inclusive piece, right? We talk about DEI a lot and I think the more we're having these conversations, the more we need to make sure that we're having those discussions at the same time. So thank you for everything. It's amazing presentation, information is a lot better. It's 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 cool to see it the way it's being presented now. So thank you.
And just just to comment on that, and we heard loud and clear from council with respect to use and and paying for use. And I I think the approach that's being proposed now definitely takes that into account. But it, once again, it's that facility charge and you'll see that when the fee resolution comes up. You'll see that there's some new categories for smaller homes. And I think that's where we can really help with with equity and and promoting more affordable housing and the rest. And then if someone chooses to take 38 showers a day, they can pay for that use, right? So I I think the approach that council has promoted back on July 18th is is good and I think that it'll it'll work out well for the city.
Just to clarify, we're going to get that presentation, like, and that that whole topic is going to come back to us in November. And so we'll be able to look at at those categories and and the different housing sizes and everything. So I really appreciate you preparing that and that it'll be a conversation that we can revisit. Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you. We appreciate it. We'll see you, we'll see you next month. Jean's one-upping me over there. I only gave one.
Also, happy October.
All right, next up is council conversations. Council? No hero today? No hero today?
I'm working on it. You guys should come up with some heroes. I know you guys got heroes. You won't be stealing my thunder. It's all about them.
I have an ongoing hero. Okay, Mr. Mr. William Root, longtime Bothell resident and prolific storm drain clearer. He's been featured in the Bothell Bridge before, but that is, that is a job that is never done, so I will celebrate bill.
Leaves keep leafing.
It's like laundry. It never really ends.
You know, the, you know, the thing about, okay, I am not OCD, but might be a little OCD about storm drains. You start clearing one storm drain with your foot on a walk, you start clearing them all. So.
I got my kids started and I know you know a lot of, well, now he's eight, but eight-year-old kids don't forget anything ever. And so every time there's a storm drain, we are clearing that storm drain. Yeah. No matter what we're trying to do.
Especially if it can be messy.
Are we going to get the adopt a storm drain signs again this year or was that just a last year thing?
I don't, I don't know. I know that if you've adopted a storm drain, if you haven't relinquished the adoption for it.
Jean's like, it's still mine.
That's right. That's right.
The signs have a way of disappearing.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
You need a new storm sign.
Well, like, how do we get more signs? And like, how do we, like, if we want to adopt more drains, can we get more signs for the more drains that we adopt? Those are just questions.
Those are good questions.
We'll see if this shows up in an upcoming city manager report. I'll find out.
Sweet. Thanks.
I like this. We can ask questions and, you know, the answer comes in the next city manager report. I love it.
It's like when we used to talk to the ceiling and like the sky just heard us and then make things happen. Yeah. You you weren't here for that. When we had virtual, like, hybrid meetings and sometimes people weren't present, it sounds like their voices are coming from the sky. And so we would appeal to the voices in the sky when we needed to ask a question.
This meeting has gone late.
All right, we're adjourned.